Uh, yes Mister Speaker, we have collated the submitted uh proposed amendments. And we get maybe ask the Secretariat to flash the said document. Meron ba sila?
The Secretariat is requested as ordered. Floor leader. Are you ready with the period of amendments?
Yes Mister Speaker but we propose that uh we go through the provision. The provisions uh proposed to be amend- amended and this has been. Uh there is a matrix for this and he proposed to present the matrix instead of uh this.
Ma- ma- matrix of proposed amendments to go together with the name of the proponents.
Yes Mister Speaker. Uh the matrix will show the proposed amendments Mister Speaker and the member of the parliament. Uh who proposed the se- the said amendments and the chair of the committee on rules. Uh will state whether.
The procedure is the chair of the commit- of the proponents or the chair of the committee on rules will just. Uh indicate whether or not she accepts or rejects the.
Yes Mister Speaker.
Proposed amendments. This is to save on time.
Yes Mister Speaker.
One minute suspension.
Mister Speaker uh I think they cannot send the document because uh there is no internet connection. So.
Session suspended for one minute.
Explain mo na lang na.
So mis- so Mister Speaker um we're presenting the matrix showing the proposed amendments. So only those parts which are proposed to be amended will be read. Uh specifically the proposed amendments and then uh. The proponent will respond. Mister Speaker one more minute. Just give us one more.
Session suspended for one minute.
So Mister Speaker we go to the first article. Which would cover introductory provisions specifically section three uh on the declaration. Of principles um M P Ampatuan proposes to change. Uh the word electorate into voter uh under paragraph C of said section. Mister Speaker.
So what is the pleasure of the proponent?
Mister Speaker we do not accept the proposed amendment Mister Speaker.
Secretariat please take note. We proceed to the next uh proposed amendment.
Okay on section five Mister Speaker uh with respect to the definitions. Uh particularly paragraph B uh there is a proposal uh to change. Commission and bank to comelec- commission on election parentheses comelec close parenthesis and bank. Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker for para- uh paragraph B. We accept with modification Mister Speaker to um read comelec and bank. Not the word as spelled Mister Speaker.
Secretariat please take note the proponent has accepted the proposed amendment.
With modification. So instead of commission on election. Parenthesis comelec close parenthesis it's just comelec and bank.
That's commission on election.
Uh Mister Speaker may I be recognized? That's my proposal. Um the reason why I put commission on election Madam uh Mister Speaker is that. This is the first time that the word comelec is being used. So we need to spell out what comelec is. This is the first time in the entire entire provision of the bill or the the law. Or the bill um Mister Speaker this is the first time that the the word comelec. Is being used.
Mister Speaker in that case we reconsider Mister Speaker. It is accepted Mister Speaker.
Secretariat please take note the proponent has accepted the uh justification of the. Proponent of the amendment.
Okay on uh paragraph C Mister Speaker the proposal coming from M P Ampatuan. Is to spell out Bangsa More Organic Law before the acronym B O L.
Mister Speaker we accept Mister Speaker.
Secretariat please take note.
And then on paragraph G uh to. Spell uh to take out the acronym B O L after the words Bangsa More Organic Law. Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker we do not accept Mister Speaker because it has already been uh. Shortened by acronym of B O L Mister Speaker.
Speaker may I explain? Mister Speaker the reason why um. I do not use the word at the acronym is because we are citing a specific provision. Uh in the B O L Mister Speaker.
Proponent?
Mister Speaker we maintain that we do not accept Mister Speaker.
Ple- uh Secretariat take note the proponent did not accept the justification of the proponent of the amendment. Let's proceed.
Mister Speaker we go to the proposal coming from M P Lim. Uh which is to add uh paragraph letter G. Uh to include independent candidate. It will read independent candidate refers to a person running for a parliamentary district seat. But who is not affiliated to a registered po- regional party or coalition.
We accept Mister Speaker.
Accepted uh the amendment. Secretariat please take note.
And then uh coming from another proposal proposed amendment Mister Speaker coming from M P Ishak Mastura. Which is to add a a separate paragraph on propos- proportional representation. It shall read uh this way proportional representation it is an electoral system in which the distribution of seats. Corresponds with the proportion of the total votes cast for each party.
Mister Speaker we do not accept Mister Speaker.
Secretariat please take note. Take note that the proponent did not accept the proposed amendment.
Uh Mister Speaker uh with respect to section four of article two I think. Um there's a proposal coming from M P Ampatuan uh. Particularly with respect to paragraph C to change the regional. Po- regional party to read regional political party inserting the word political Mister Speaker.
Proponent?
We accept Mister Speaker.
Secretariat take note the proponent has accepted the proposed amendment of M P Ampatuan.
With respect to section seven Mister Speaker on the uh section on budget. There's a proposal coming from M P Don Loong uh to delete the last uh portion of the first paragraph. Which reads provided that the reserve fund shall not exceed the allocated maintenance and other operating expenses. Of the B E O for that election year.
We accept Mister Speaker.
You accept. Secretariat please take note the proponent has accepted the proposed amendment of uh the gentleman from Sulu M P Don Loong.
And under article three Mister Speaker uh coming from M P Ampatuan. There's a proposal to uh provide more details on the. Uh requirements for the establishment of a political party. Um pertaining to.
Mister Speaker if I may um I actually deleted that uh.
Deleted.
Yeah. Uh ayawan ko kung hindi kami nagkaintindihan ng secretariat but si Rob knows it. Uh instead of using the entire because that was already proposed under the committee and it was already reject- rejected. Uh I had a counter proposal which indicates that it's five thousand instead of the ten thousand.
So it's and it's not one thousand as appears in the first paragraph?
It is based on the original uh. It is based on the original um uh
Draft bill.
Original um section that uh uh is provided in the clean copy. So instead of ten thousand, I I counter proposed for five thousand and not the entire because it this was already reje- rejected at the committee level.
Okay, so five thousand, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, we do not accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note. The proponent, the author or the proponents do not accept the proposed amendment of MP of the lady from Magindano.
Pwede bang magobject? Pwede naman siguro magobject yung uh that that's a proposal and there's a counter proposal and I have the right to counter uh to to reject also the the proposal.
Uh there is no counter proposal. We just maintain and uh stick by the language in the code. I mean bill, Mister.
The counter proposal is instead of ten thousand, it's five thou- five thousand.
One minute suspension. Session resumes. We have a situation where the proponent of amendment insists on her proponent and the only remedy here is to uh divide the house. What is the pleasure of the proponent?
Mister Speaker, I move that um we divide the house, Mister Speaker.
On the proposed uh on the proposed amendment of the proponent of the amendment.
Mister Speaker, I think the other proposals are similar. This is on the matter of uh the minimum number of members uh in order for a regional political party to have itself registered. So maybe we can vote on the all the other uh proposals, all of them uh proposing to amend section one um and requiring only five thousand instead of ten thousand as a requirement for the number of members.
So we will vote that the proponent uh rejects all proposed amendments on this uh specific provision?
Yes, Mister Speaker, my understanding is uh the object uh the rejection or not accepting the proposal covers all the other proposals uh where five thousand instead of ten thousand is the minimum requirement, Mister Speaker.
Okay, we will proceed. We will proceed to divide the house. All of those in favor of one minute suspension. Uh before we divide the house on specific provision of art- what article is that?
Section one, Mister Speaker.
Article?
Two. Ah three, three, sorry. Article three, section one.
Article three, section one. The question is, all of those who in who are in favor of retaining the current language of section one, article three, will they will raise their hand? Uh all of those not in favor, they will also uh uh raise their hands. All of tho- uh we will now proceed to voting. All of those not, all of those in favor of retaining yes, uh uh I think, can he?
With your due indulgence, I think before we vote, you state what is the what is the provision that will be voted, not just the original proposition as stated in section three. You should say, you should say it in the, you should say that this this the provision which reads section three with the provision which read and then we we proceed to vote.
Yeah, the problem is I cannot see the provision here in my screen ah because of the uh technical difficulties.
Then we allow the secretariat to read or the floor leader.
Miss- so Mister Speaker, the question would be uh all those who are in favor of retaining uh the ten thousand requirement for the registration of political parties as provided in section one, article three raise, should raise their hands.
Okay. May we re- may we uh may we ask the secretariat to read section one, article three?
Mister Speaker, di ba mas madali kong who are in favor nung proposed amendment ko or pa- sa ah marami? Okay.
Mister Speaker, can I just read?
Yeah, you can read. Uh we will allow the floor leader to read.
Okay, uh section one, establishment of regional political parties. Regional political parties in the Bangsa Moro, hearing after parties or party shall be established by at least ten thousand members who are residents and registered voters therein. The members shall be distributed throughout the different provinces and cities comprising the Bangsa Moro territory. Provided that all parties shall establish provincial and city chapters in all provinces and cities and municipal chapters in the majority of the municipalities comprising each province in the Bangsa Moro. Provided further that a provincial chapter is required to have municipal chapters in majority of the municipalities in that province.
Uh there you have it. We will now proceed with the division of the house. All of those in favor of retaining the current language of section one, article three, please raise your hands. Secretariat, please count. Bosnan? Toda? Toda? Okay, next. Please, uh tapos na yung sa first question. All of those in favor of not, all of those not in favor of retaining the current language of section one, article three, please raise your hands. So the current language, the uh the current language holds.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. There are other proposals, but since we have already voted on retaining the uh language of section one, we shall forego all the other proposed amendments.
Think that is the consequence of the voting if the uh proponent maintains its position on the current language.
Okay, so Mister Speaker, can we go to the succeeding sections? Okay. Because we are retaining the first uh the language of section one. So can we now go to section two? Which is on, uh uh what, re- section two, registration of regional political parties. Uh there's a proposal coming from MP Mastura saying that the party registration should follow the provisions on registration of political parties as provided in Republic Act seventy-four ninety-one or the Party List System Act uh in section five thereof, which is consistent with us with section seven, article nine C of the nineteen eighty-seven Philippine Constitution.
What is the pleasure of the proponent?
Mister Speaker, we do not accept, Mister Speaker.
Speaker. Yes, uh the proponent of the amendment.
I object and I I call for a division of the house on this provision.
There is some, there is a move to divide the house on that specific, what specific provision, section three?
Section two of article three.
Section two, article three. One minute suspension. Proceed with the division of the house. Those who are in favor of amending section two, article three raise your hands. Tatlo. Apat. Those who are not in favor of the amendment, please raise your hands. Secretariat, do we have our results on the vote?
Yes, Mister Speaker. For the result of the votations on article three, section two. For those in favor of the amendments, we have four votes. For those who are not in favor of uh the amendments, we have fifty seven votes.
The uh yes, ah the 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 noes have it.
The noes.
So we retain the current language of section three.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Section uh section two, article three.
Article three. Uh Mister Speaker, we go to section four. Uh there's a proposal coming from MP Alamiya, MP Alamiya particularly in relation to uh paragraph one. Uh this pertains to the requirements for registration of regional political parties. Okay, there's a proposal to include this uh paragraph. For the first BARM parliamentary elections, six percent of its members may consist of actual members of underrepresented and marginalized groups as reflected in the party's official membership book with each of the following sectors consisting of at least one percent. Non-Moro indigenous peoples, settler communities, women, youth, traditional leaders, and the ulama, Mister Speaker.
The proponent, what is uh your position on the amendment, proposed amendment?
I I think, Mister Speaker, for one and two.
Okay, for number two, Mister Speaker, there's another uh paragraph being proposed to be included. And this reads, for the succeeding BARM parliamentary elections, twelve percent of its members must consist of actual members of underrepresented and marginalized groups as reflected in the party's official membership book with each of the following sectors consisting of at least two percent. Uh non-Moro indigenous people, settler communities, women, youth, traditional leaders, and the ulama. And uh under paragraph D okay, so those are the first uh two proposed amendments in relation to section for Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, for paragraphs uh one and two which are highlighted, we do not accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note.
And then, uh Mister Speaker, for under letter D uh there's a proposal to include a sub-paragraph alamo ba? Or insert uh the phrase its official logo so that such paragraph will read the party's full name, its abbreviation if any, its official logo and its principal place of business which must be in any one of the provinces of the Bangsa Moro. The next paragraph will also include uh official logo in the sentences, in the second paragraph. Uh the next two sentences in the next paragraph, Mister Speaker.
We accept, we accept, Mister Speaker.
The proponent accepts, please take note, Secretariat.
Okay. On the same section, Mister Speaker, there's a proposal coming from, ah, yun na rin, no? Uh there's a proposal coming from MP Ambatuan uh proposing to delete the number of uh members in paragraph C so that the paragraph will read a notarized list of members of the party without mentioning how many uh members are included in the list.
We do not accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note, the proponent did not accept the proposed amendment.
Okay, on section five uh of the same article, Mister Speaker, there's a proposal to include under paragraph A, a proviso that reads uh provided that the committee must be composed of at least fifty percent women and at least twenty five percent sectoral members.
Diretso.
And then for paragraph B, uh the insertion of another proviso provided that the committee must be composed of at least one woman and one sectoral member. Under paragraph C, the uh inclusion of another proviso that reads provided that the committee must be composed of at least fifty percent women and with at least one member from each reserved seat sector, Mister Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the proponent?
Wala na. Meron pa po, yata.
Who is the proponent of this proposal?
MP Alamiya, Mister Speaker. And then on paragraph D, uh the insertion of another proviso that reads provided that the committee must be composed of at least fifty percent women and with at least one member from each reserved sec- seat sector.
Mister Speaker, we do not accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note, the proponent did not accept the proposed amendments.
Uh pertaining to the same section, Mister Speaker there's a uh proposal coming from MP Atop- Ambatuan to include a paragraph requiring a women's committee which ensures that women's representation as well as gender and development agenda are considered by all committees and chapters of the political party. I think that's the only one, no? That's the insertion.
What is the pleasure of the proponent?
Mister Speaker, uh we accept with modification, Mister Speaker. Letter G to read a women and youth committee which ensures that women's and youth representation as well as women and youth agenda are considered by all committees and chapters of the political party, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note, the proponent accepts with modification the proposed amendments. Happy Women's Month.
Uh Mister Speaker, on section six, there's a proposal coming from MP Mawalil to include um two paragraphs, the second paragraph two sentences. Uh the sentences that read that read this way, all regional political parties shall ensure that women and youth are duly represented in the roster of officers. This shall be reflected in its constitution and bylaws, Mister Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the proponent?
Mister Speaker, we accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note, the proponent accepts the proposed amendments.
Okay, Mister Speaker, coming to section nine, there's a proposal co- from uh MP Alamiya under paragraph B um to in to increase the percentage of party nominees uh who are women from thirty percent to fifty percent, Mister Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the proponent?
Uh Mister Speaker, can we also look at the other provisions highlighted, Mister Speaker?
In paragraph D uh there's a proposal to amend it so that it reads this way, any person who is not found in the latest membership book of the political party submitted to the B E O, provided members who join the party within six months before an election will not be eligible for nomination as party representative under the new party or organization. And uh paragraph E, the list of nominees shall be arranged in chronological order of their nomination as party representatives alternating between male and female. However, the list of nominees as submitted to the B E O shall be without prejudice to the power of a party to determine who can sit among its nominees and to unseat any party member sitting in the parliament for breach of party loyalty or violation of party rules uh or policies. And under letter G, um to for it to read this way, nominations in violation of paragraphs B, C, D, and E uh above shall be denied the course by by denied due course by the B E O, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, we do not accept, Mister Speaker.
The proponent did not accept. Uh Secretariat, please take note.
There's another proposal coming from MP Ambatuan, Mister Speaker, pertaining to paragraph B which also proposes to change thirty percent to forty percent um of the list of nominees uh to be women, uh Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, we maintain the uh thirty percent in the origina- in the back, Mister Speaker, we do not accept, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, I move to divide the house.
There is a motion to divide the house. The question is, those who are in uh uh session suspended. There is a motion to divide the house. The question will be, those who are in favor question resumes. Ah okay. Se- session suspended. We will divide the house. Those who are in favor of amending section, uh what section is that?
Section nine, Mister Speaker.
Section nine of article three uh from thirty percent to forty percent, raise your hands.
Speaker, mis- Mister Speaker. Um if I may, uh Mister Speaker, so that we don't make a circles out of this uh issue, Mister Speaker please um take note that the original bill number twenty nine talks about ten percent. Thirty percent as uh increased in the bill is a critical mass and it is already uh it is a significant uh difference from ten percent, just.
It is a milestone already. It is a milestone for the women's uh advoc- advocate.
Um Mister Speaker, may I be also given one minute?
I'll give you thirty seconds.
Thirty second, Mister Speaker. Uh Mister Speaker, if we place thirty percent right now, it's only twelve seats, Mister Speaker, and there is no assurance that that twelve seats will be uh given to women. Why? Because as stated in the the in the draft, um it doesn't follow that when you give thirty percent, that the thirty percent of the list of the party list is a- are all women, Mister Speaker. So if that political party gets only uh ten seats ten seats, so that's the um the the chance is that no among from that ten seat i- uh is is a woman, Mi- Mister Speaker, and so there is really no assurance that we can get a seat uh with that kind of wordings, Mister Speaker.
We we, uh Secretariat, please take note of the positions. We will now proceed with the division of the house. Those who are in favor of the amendment from thirty percent to forty percent, raise your hands. We only have four votes. Those who are not in favor of of the proposed amendments please raise your hands. please raise your hands. Secretariat, do you have the results? Mister Speaker, here is the result of the division of the house of the article three, section nine. For those in favor of the amendments, we have four votes. For those who are not in favor of the amendments, we have fifty-one votes. The those who are not in favor have uh prevailed. Pro- floor leader?
Yes, on the same uh provision, Mister Speaker, uh, there's a proposal coming from MP Don Loong to add another paragraph after paragraph D, which shall read this way. In case of dispute or disagreement between or among the nominees disqualified under the immediately preceding paragraph, the concerned party shall settle the dispute by a coin toss or drawing of lots, whichever is applicable.
What is the pleasure of the proponent?
Mister Speaker, we do not accept, Mister Speaker.
The sec- secretariat, please take note, the proponent did not accept the proposed amendment. Floor leader, let's proceed.
Yes, Mister Speaker. We go to section fourteen. Uh, this is a proposed new provision. Actually, it's a whole set of provisions pertaining to party subsidy fund, Mister Speaker. The equivalent provision in the uh bill, Mister Speaker, says that the parliament may establish a political party subsidy fund pertaining to an act of parliament in the future. But here, there's a proposal to provide for a political party subsidy fund, Mister Speaker. It goes from section fourteen up to, can you go up? I think can. So it's the establishment of a BARM political party subsidy fund. Section fifteen, requirements for certification, next. Section sixteen, effects of certifications. Section seventeen, mandatory voter education activities. Um, and require uh and this will be connected to the development fund. And then public funding for party development activities. A section on public funding for campaign expenditures. A section on the use of public funding for party development activities. Section twenty-one, management of the subsidy. Section twenty-two, audit of the fund. Section twenty-three, full disclosures. Section twenty-four, other reports, Mister Speaker. And section twenty-five, failure to comply with disclosure and reporting requirements.
Mister Speaker, if I may?
Yes, uh, the proponent of the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Um, based on the interpolation that we did yesterday, Mister Speaker, this proponent of the amendment and the proponent of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code has already agreed uh uh that and I have mentioned that I'm submitting these provisions uh to be considered as part of the bill that would be passed, that would pertain uh on solely on political party subsidy fund, Mister Speaker.
So you are withdrawing this proposal?
I am withdrawing this proposal, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, take note, the proponent of the propos- proposed amendment has withdrawn his proposal.
Mister Speaker, we go to article four.
The the gentleman from Lumba Bayabo is raising his hands. Yes, uh, MP uh Mitmag.
Mister Speaker, me- meron kaming proposal kanina 'yung sa sa ano tawag nito, sa thresholds. Uh, 'yung s- uh, 'yung propose- 'yung proposed amendment for the thresholds for amendments. Wala pa 'yun. Okay, thank you.
So can we proceed to article four, Mister Speaker?
Secretariat, please uh flash on the screen.
Okay, article uh four, Mister Speaker, particularly section four, um, coming from MP Mastura, pertaining to vacancy in the parliament. Uh, there's a proposal to include a paragraph that reads this way. The grounds for disqualification of the members of parliament shall be the same grounds for disqualification of representatives of the House of Representatives of the Philippines under existing national laws and the nineteen eighty-seven Philippine Constitution.
What is the pleasure of the proponent?
Mister Speaker, we do not accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note, the proponent did not accept the proposed amendment of uh the gentleman from Sultan Kudarat Magidano. Floor leader, we will proceed.
Yes, Mister Speaker, I think uh we will go to section seven. Uh, this pertains to coalitions and and a proposal coming from MP Romeo Sema. Um, is is to amend the first paragraph of the same of the said section to delete the phrase or party, Mister Speaker, so that it only reads accredited regional political parties, local political parties, and sectoral organizations, I think that should be a plural, uh, either for election or political purposes.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note, the pro- the proponent has accepted the proposed amendment.
Okay.
Floor leader, we proceed.
The same section, Mister Speaker, there's a proposal coming from MP Lorena. Um, and it reads this way, a coalition of regional political party for the purpose of local elections only, uh thereby deleting the political purpose, ay, sorry, uh, only for local elections. And then another paragraph, a coalition of regional political parties, party and a sectoral organization for the purpose of sectoral representation, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, we accept with modification, Mister Speaker. To read, in case of a coalition, and I think this is the thought.
Please uh let us hear the the modification to the proposed amendment.
Yes, because I think this is the thought of uh MP Lorena um when he mentioned it to us. And in case of a coalition between a regional party and a local political party, the regional polit- the the regional political party can field nominees in the party seats, while such coalition can field candidates for the local elections. In case of a coalition between a regional political party and a sectoral organization, the regional political party can field candidates for the party seats, while such coalition can field candidates for the sectoral representatives.
So, uh, secretariat, please take note, the proponent has accepted the proposed amendment with modification.
Mister Speaker, we go to section eight, and this pertains to party representatives. So the proposal, Mister Speaker, comes from MP Don Loong. Um, and it reads this way. Any person holding a public appointive office or position, uh, including active members of the armed forces of the Philippines and other officers and employees of in government-owned or controlled corporation shall be considered, ipse facto resigned from the office and she must vacate the same at the start of the regular office hours of the day of the filing of the certificate of nomination and acceptance of nomination. For purposes of this section, a public officer holding a public appointive office or position shall be deemed to include private citizens appointed to public offices representing the private sector, Mister Speaker.
We do not accept, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, can I just have one minute?
Yeah, we will hear you.
Mister Speaker, during the deliberations, the interpolations, the floor leader mentioned the resolution of COMELEC as basis. And I have checked that resolution that is dated twenty thirteen. And I am uh reading the resolution dated twenty fifteen and dated twenty twenty-one for the twenty twenty-two elections. And it states, same section eight, effects of acceptance of nomination. And this is for party list nomination. Any person holding a public appointive office or position, including the A F P, other officers, shall be considered ipse facto resigned from the office and must vacate the same at the start of the day of the filing of certificates of nomination for acceptance. For purposes of this section, a public officer holding a public appointive office or position shall be deemed to include private citizens appointed to public offices representing the private sector. Uh, the provision I have uh forwarded is cut and paste from the resolution nine nine eight four dated twenty fifteen and resolution one zero seven one seven dated uh twenty twenty-one. So I am worried that we would be passing a law that would contravene to recent resolution and we would be sticking to the twenty thirteen uh resolution. Of course, I understand the concern about members of parliament. Actually, there there is a provision that uh uh we can put uh a provision there that uh this will not apply to members of parliament for the twenty twenty-five elections. But then if we uh use the same section eight, we will be going against the provision of two re- recent resolutions of the COMELEC.
Secretar- the the floor leader?
Mister Speaker, to verify the um content of the contents of the COMELEC resolution being referred to, may we ask for a one-minute suspension?
One-minute suspension.
Session resumes. Session resumes. Have the proponents to the bill and the proponents to the amendment agreed on something? Have the proponents to the bill and the proponents to the amendment agreed on something?
Ah, Mister Speaker. Ah, Mister Speaker. Ah, as much as I would like to accept the concept that ah we will have a brain drain. Ah, as much as I would like to accept the concept that ah we will have a brain drain. Ah, in my logic and in my heart, I cannot accept Ah, in my logic and in my heart, I cannot accept ah career officials of the BARM all running for positions because they will become biased. So I move for a division of the house ah career officials of the BARM all running for positions because they will become biased. So I move for a division of the house so that I can just count my vote as against ah that provision. so that I can just count my vote as against ah that provision.
There is now a motion to divide the house on the proposed amendment of the gentleman from Sulu. There is now a motion to divide the house on the proposed amendment of the gentleman from Sulu. Those who are in favor Those who are in favor of the new provision as introduced by the gentleman from Sulu, of the new provision as introduced by the gentleman from Sulu, please raise your hands. please raise your hands.
I'm in favor. I'm in favor.
Those who are not in favor of the proposed amendment, please raise your hands. Those who are not in favor of the proposed amendment, please raise your hands. Secretariat, do you have a results of the vote? Secretariat, do you have a results of the vote?
Mister Speaker, here's the result of the quotations on Mister Speaker, here's the result of the quotations on amendments of the article four, section eight. amendments of the article four, section eight. For those For those in favor of the amendment, we have nine votes. in favor of the amendment, we have nine votes. For those who are not in favor of the amendments, we have fifty one votes. For those who are not in favor of the amendments, we have fifty one votes.
Secretariat, please take note the current language of Secretariat, please take note the current language of section eight. This is section eight. section eight. This is section eight.
Yes, Mister Speaker. Yes, Mister Speaker.
Is maintained. The proposed amendment has been rejected. Is maintained. The proposed amendment has been rejected.
We go, Mister Speaker, to section nine, and this is on party representatives. We go, Mister Speaker, to section nine, and this is on party representatives. Setting the threshold. Setting the threshold. There is a proposal coming from ah MP Ampatuan There is a proposal coming from ah MP Ampatuan to reduce the threshold of four percent to two and a half percent. to reduce the threshold of four percent to two and a half percent. Same proposal coming from MP Don Loong, Same proposal coming from MP Don Loong, which is the reduction of four percent to two point five. which is the reduction of four percent to two point five. Also from MP Mitmog, from four percent to two point five percent, Mister Speaker. Also from MP Mitmog, from four percent to two point five percent, Mister Speaker.
Pro- the proponent, what is the pleasure of the proponent? Pro- the proponent, what is the pleasure of the proponent?
We reject, Mister Speaker. We reject, Mister Speaker.
Yes, ah, the gentleman from Lumba Bayarok? Yes, ah, the gentleman from Lumba Bayarok?
Ah, for records purposes, Mister Speaker, we would like to divide the house. Ah, for records purposes, Mister Speaker, we would like to divide the house.
There is a motion to divide the house There is a motion to divide the house on, ah what section is this? on, ah what section is this?
Section nine. Section nine.
Section nine, article? Section nine, article?
Four. Four.
Four of ah BTA Bill number twenty nine. Four of ah BTA Bill number twenty nine. The question will be ah, those who are, we will now divide the house. The question will be ah, those who are, we will now divide the house. Those who are in favor of the proposed amendments, raise your hands. Those who are in favor of the proposed amendments, raise your hands. Those who are not in favor of the proposed amendment, please raise your hands. Those who are not in favor of the proposed amendment, please raise your hands. Bakit walang three percent? Bakit walang three percent? Secretariat, what is the result? Secretariat, what is the result?
Mister Speaker, for the result of the Mister Speaker, for the result of the butation on butation on the article four, section nine. the article four, section nine. For those ah in favor of the amendments, we have eight votes. For those ah in favor of the amendments, we have eight votes. For those not in favor of the amendment, we have forty six votes. For those not in favor of the amendment, we have forty six votes.
Now, the current language of section nine, article four is retained. Take note, Secretariat. Now, the current language of section nine, article four is retained. Take note, Secretariat.
We go to ah section ten, Mister Speaker, but I think we have already We go to ah section ten, Mister Speaker, but I think we have already ah gone through a similar proposal, but in another section. ah gone through a similar proposal, but in another section. Ah, but for section ten, there's a ca- a proposal coming from ah MP Alamiya Ah, but for section ten, there's a ca- a proposal coming from ah MP Alamiya to increase the to increase the nominees who are women from thirty percent to fifty percent. nominees who are women from thirty percent to fifty percent. And then same thing from MP Ampatuan, which was also voted on earlier And then same thing from MP Ampatuan, which was also voted on earlier from thirty percent to forty percent, Mister Speaker. from thirty percent to forty percent, Mister Speaker.
So we have settled that already? So we have settled that already?
Yes, Mister Speaker. Yes, Mister Speaker.
We proceed with the next ah provision. We proceed with the next ah provision.
We go to section eleven, Mister Speaker. There is a proposal coming from MP Ampatuan um We go to section eleven, Mister Speaker. There is a proposal coming from MP Ampatuan um with respect to section eleven to include with respect to section eleven to include the phrase and accepted. the phrase and accepted. So the phrase, the sentence will now read, no person shall be nominated and accepted So the phrase, the sentence will now read, no person shall be nominated and accepted in more than one list, Mister Speaker. in more than one list, Mister Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the proponent? What is the pleasure of the proponent?
We do not accept, Mister Speaker. We do not accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note. The proponent has rejected the proposed amendment of the lady from Magindanaw. Secretariat, please take note. The proponent has rejected the proposed amendment of the lady from Magindanaw.
Speaker, just manifestation. Speaker, just manifestation.
Yeah, manifestation only. Yeah, manifestation only.
Um, i- it's actually unfair on a on a person if Um, i- it's actually unfair on a on a person if he or she will be nominated by two parties without he or she will be nominated by two parties without him or her accepting it and he will be disqualified, Mister Speaker. That's my intention. Thank you, Mister Speaker. him or her accepting it and he will be disqualified, Mister Speaker. That's my intention. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
We take note of the manifestation of the lady from Magindanaw. We take note of the manifestation of the lady from Magindanaw.
Mister Speaker, may we ask for one-minute suspension? Mister Speaker, may we ask for one-minute suspension?
One-minute suspension. Please, ah, one minute, huh? One-minute suspension. Please, ah, one minute, huh? Session resumes. Have the proponent and the the proponent of the bill and the proponent of the proposed amendment come to an agreement?
Mister Speaker, ah on section eleven, um we reconsider and accept with modification, Mister Speaker, to read that no person shall be nominated nor accept a nomination in more than one list, Mister Speaker.
So there is a response already, Mister Speaker.
The Secretariat, please take note that the proponent of the bill has accepted the proposed amendments with modification.
Ah, Mister Speaker, we go to section twelve. And I think ah this matter has also been ah voted on earlier. Ah, MP Alamiya proposes that um under paragraph A of said section ah the threshold ah should be reduced from four percent to two point five percent.
Secretariat, please take note that we will forego deliberating on this provision because this has, this matter has already been settled. We will now proceed with the next ah provision.
So there is a proposal, it's the same pro- provision, Mister Speaker. Pakibaba pa po. No, no. More, more. Because there is a proposal coming from MP Mastura, Mister Speaker. Ah, that instead of four percent, I think the threshold is reduced to two percent of the total votes cast for the party-based system of proportional representation. Ah, and those parties and coalitions shall receive, shall be entitled to one seat each. And provided that those garnering more than two percent of the votes shall be entitled to additional seats in proportion to their total number of votes, Mister Speaker.
This matter has already been ah settled in a previous ah?
Yes, Mister Speaker, except that ah earlier we voted on two point five, now it's two percent. And I guess the answer would be the same.
Yes.
Ah, which is not to accept.
We proceed with the next provision.
So we go to the same section, but this time a proposal comes from MP Pacasam. And this is on the manner of allocation of party representative seats. Ah, it will read this way, paragraph A, only parties receiving at least four percent of the to- total valid votes cast for the party representation election shall be qualified to participate in the allocation of party representation seats. Ah, deleting the phrase one guaranteed seat each.
What is the proposed amendment here?
Ah, the deletion of the phrase one guaranteed seat each. And then in the second ah paragraph, Mister Speaker, ah the pro- the proposed amendment now reads this way, such qualifying parties shall be ranked from highest to lowest according to the number of valid votes they obtained. And the seats allocated to them shall be the proportion of the votes obtained by each to the total number of votes received by all qualifying parties, rounded down to the lower whole number. Deleting the phrase, ah the sentence, additional seats shall be allocated to them in proportion to the total number of votes of all winning parties. And then um changing the next paragraph into the following, thereafter, the remaining seats shall be allocated to the qualifying parties according to their ranking, giving one seat each to to the highest, down to the lowest, until all the remaining seats are allocated, Mister Speaker.
So letter G will become letter F?
No, actually, Mister Speaker, letter D is actually letter A.
Ah, okay. So what is the pleasure of the proponent of BTA Bill number twenty nine?
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note the proponent has accepted the amendment.
We go to section thirteen, Mister Speaker. Ah, on parliamentary district seats, there's a proposal coming from MP Lim to add one sentence after the the existing or the current language. Ah, and the additional sentence will read this way, independent candidates may vie for district representative seats.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note that the proponent has accepted the proposed amendment.
For section fourteen, Mister Speaker, there's a proposal coming from MP Ampatuan ah on the ma- on the allocation of parliamentary district seats. The proposal is to have parliamentary district seats ah consisting of the eight congressional districts with three seats per district. And provided that the Magindanaw, Del Norte and Magindanaw del Sur shall have three seats each. Provided further that the twenty twenty official population statistics shall be considered in the allocation of seats for the cities and the special geographic areas. Thereby allocating three seats for Cotabato City, two seats for Marawi City, one seat for Lamitan City, and two seats for the special geographic area, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, as um earlier or um responded based on the response yesterday, Mister Speaker, this, there is going to be a law to be enacted by parliament on this, so we do not accept, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, there is no harm in including this, even though we ah come up with another ah law because this is only an allocation. It doesn't, we did, we do not ah define here um the specific barangays or municipalities ah that belongs to a particular district. What we are allocating here is only the seats, Mister Speaker. And um with this, Mister Speaker, I move to divide the house. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to divide the house. Yeah, may we hear the ah gentleman from Sulu?
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Much that we want to consider that, but ah we must consider that the, in the process of the electoral code, we have submitted all provisions including certain amendments, but this is a new provision and we have covered this during the public consultation. And the districting is very critical to involve the the region, the entirety of the region. So if I made a request, this can be conceded in another bill as already propounded because the districting proposal can be legislated otherwise, separate from the present electoral code. So if I may, I would rather state I would rather state that, uh, considering that public consultation had not been done for redistricting because of our idea that we will legislate another uh, law on redistricting, then we should go by that, otherwise the people would think that we are too strewed to include something which we did not include in the public consultation. That is a manifestation that I want to put it on record. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Speaker, may I also?
Yes, the gentleman from Sultan Kudarat Magindano. Yes, uh, for me, it's also just a manifestation, uh, before we vote, or if 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 we will still proceed with the vote. Uh, I joined the manifestation of Attorney Lilo Rena in the sense that there is urgency with regard to the de- de- redistricting. Because remember, when we asked for an extension of the B T A in the B T A one, the key issue in the Senate with regard to the electoral code was we could, they could not conduct elections according to the Comelec without the districts. So in this case, we will pass the electoral code, but without the district, that is still a problem for, uh, the Comelec. And I think given this kind of, uh, setup right now, Comelec will not allow anymore that uh, elections will not proceed now that we have an electoral code, simply because we don't have the districts. Because they can very well adopt the congressional districts. So, uh, just to emphasize the urgency of this bill, uh, now that we will be passing the electoral code, I, I, I I, uh, I, I support some, some, uh, provision with regard to the, the redistricting. But, uh, in case this is, uh, withdrawn or removed, uh, as long as the manifestation remains and what Tony Joe Lorena said, uh, is, is, is for the record, uh, I join in that manifestation. Thank you.
Mister Speaker.
There is, there is a standing motion to divide the house.
Mister Speaker, before we, uh, do so, Mister Speaker, let me just also point out that the proposal is not in, not consistent with what is in the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, Mister Speaker, because of the single member, uh, district seat. So, um, Mister Speaker, if the good lady will reconsider, I think we have, um, we have already responded and addressed this, Mister Speaker, that, uh, we don't divide the house on this.
Mister Speaker, um, with the request coming from the majority floor leader and with the wisdom coming from the father of the B O L, I withdraw my proposal.
Uh, uh, Secretariat, please take note, the proponent of the proposed amendment has withdrawn his proposed amendment, her proposed amendment. For later, we will proceed.
Yes, Mister Speaker, can we move to section sixteen, Mister Speaker? There's a proposal coming from M P Ampatuan to delete the phrase or regional under paragraph D, Mister Speaker.
Is the pleasure the proponent?
Um, Mister Speaker, we accept with modification to read a member of either a regional political party or sectoral organization, removing pars- uh, party after sectoral, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note, the proposed amendment has been accepted with modification.
Can we go to section seventeen, Mister Speaker? Uh, this pertains to the manner of election of sectoral representatives. There's a proposal coming from M P Alamiya to rephrase the, uh, first sentence so that it reads, except for non-Moro indigenous peoples, traditional leaders, representative, and ulama representative. Uh, and then the deletion of the last paragraph, Mister Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the proponent?
Mister Speaker, we, uh, we accept with modification. Uh, the counterproposal is to read the election of sectoral representatives shall commence in twenty twenty-eight for the twenty twenty-five election. Section one of article ten shall apply.
In respect to the first paragraph, first paragraph.
Uh, for the first paragraph, that is not, uh, accepted, Mister Speaker.
So accepted with modification, Mister Speaker.
What is the modification? Wha- can you repeat the modification?
Mister Speaker, the modification on the first paragraph, um, we do not accept, but on the last paragraph, we we, um.
So for the first paragraph, Mister Speaker, I think, uh, the answer is not to ac- not acce- not to accept the proposal. But for the second paragraph, there's a an acceptance with modification so that we're, the, the paragraph is retained, but there's a deletion of the phrase in the national and local elections, Mister Speaker. So the paragraph is retained. It will read this way, the election of sectoral representatives shall commence in twenty twenty-eight, deleting the phrase in the national and local elections.
What, uh, uh, the secretariat, please take note that the proposed amendment in section sixteen has been accepted by the, uh, proponent of B T A bill number twenty-nine with modification. Let's proceed.
Uh, there's another proposal coming from, uh, M P Ampatuan to insert the phrase of this code after article ten, Mister Speaker.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note, the proponent has accepted the proposed amendment.
And then, uh, with respect to section eighteen, there's a proposal coming from M P Ampatuan, uh, which covers, uh, which is an omnibus amendment to delete the word regional and just pertaining to sectoral parties.
We accept with modification, Mister Speaker, to remove parties or, uh, the words parties or after sectoral so that it would only appear as sectoral organizations all throughout, Mister Speaker.
Remove all part, uh, the, the word parties after sectoral?
Yes.
Secretariat, please take note, the proponent has accepted the proposed amendment with modification.
There's a proposal with respect to the same section, Mister Speaker, coming from M P Don Loong to introduce a new provision, uh, establishing or creating the office of the traditional tradition leaders or traditional leaders affairs.
That is, uh, we do not accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note, the proponent has rejected the proposed amendment.
Okay, uh, with respect to section nineteen, Mister Speaker, also coming from M P Ampatuan to change or to delete the word, uh, regional pertaining to sectoral representatives.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note, the proponent has accepted the proposed amendment.
As to section twenty, Mister Speaker, uh, the proposal of M P Ampatuan is to change the word chap- to change the word branches into chapters.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note, the proponent accepted the pro- proposed amendment.
And then with respect to section twenty-two, Mister Speaker, coming from M P Mendoza to add, uh, paragraph G on gender equality, uh, so that it reads this way, gender equality recognizes the unique role and participation of women in the indigenous political structure.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
With respect to section twenty-four, Mister Speaker, we have several proposals. Ca- one is, comes from M P Mendoza, um, which reads this way. The last paragraph will be amended so that it reads the Ministry of Indigenous Peoples Affairs shall facilitate the organization of the N M I P Committee in due regard to the primacy of their customary processes.
What is the pleasure of your proponent?
We accept, Mister Speaker.
From M P Romeo Sema, Mister Speaker, uh, the proposal is to uh, change the phrase from tribal leader representatives uh, sorry, from representatives of indigenous people structures to tribal leaders of the indigenous political structure.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
And then from M P Pyang, Mister Speaker, um, the phrase propriety of rotation arrangement uh, to be included in the matters that the N M I P Committee shall, um, consider, Mister Speaker.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
And then with respect to section twenty-five, Mister Speaker, coming from M P Parcasio, um, and there's, there are several of, uh, sections or provisions, Mister Speaker. Uh, section twenty-five, the election of N M I P representatives shall be done in tribal assemblies in accordance with the procedure in the following sections. And then the following sections are so provided, uh. So in section twenty-six, the selection of four representatives. Each tribe should convene a tribal assembly to select four representatives, two males and two females to an interregional tribal assembly. And this will decide the manner of rotation of tribal representation in the Bangsa Moro Parliament. The selection of four representatives shall be in accordance with their customs and traditions. Can we go, can we go up? Um, still on this matter of, uh, selecting the representatives in the assemblies and the, and the convention, uh, section twenty-seven goes on to say that the intertribal regional assembly will select the pairing of at least two tribes that will have their tribal members represent N M I P sectoral representatives in the parliament. The process of selecting the pairing of tribes will be done in accordance with the procedure adopted by the tribal regional assembly in accordance with customs and traditions. And then section twenty-eight, election of tribal representative. Uh, the fa- following the intertribal assembly, each of the two paired tribes shall convene their respective tribal assemblies to elect the N M I P sectoral representatives to the Bangsa Moro Parliament in accordance with their customs and traditions. Section twenty-nine, submission of the names of the two elected N M I P, the names of the two elected N M I P representatives from the two paired tribes shall be submitted to the Comelec through the B E O within seven days before the parliamentary elections. And section thirty, succeeding election procedure provided under the foregoing sections shall apply to succeeding elections. Um, Mister Speaker, so that would be the process of electing or selecting the N M I P representatives, Mister Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the proponent?
Mister Speaker, since the, uh, idea of, uh, rotation, uh, from the language of M P Parcasio as submitted is already captured by that of the accepted language from M P Romeo Sema, we do not accept, Mister Speaker. Uh, M P Pyang, sorry.
M P Pyang.
Uh, Mister Speaker, I have lived, I am a Moro, but I have lived within, uh, community non-Moro indigenous communities. Non-Moro indigenous communities who are not, uh, residents of this, uh, region. And I have in- intermingled with them. I have learned their culture, and I could even speak, uh, their languages. In addition, Mister Speaker, not only have I lived amidst uh, indigenous peoples who are not Muslims, but I have also, uh, studied. And in fact, uh, I've been a lecturer of the Indigenous Peoples Rights Act. And in my intermingling with them since I was a child, I have, uh, seen their simplicity. And, uh, because of that, I have proposed these sections as amendment to the, uh, to the proposed, uh, bill. And so therefore, Mister, Mister Speaker, I would move, despite the fact that I have some idea on how the voting will, will, uh, you know, will result or how the, how the, what was the result of the voting, I would still request that, uh, we divide the house, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to divide the house. We will proceed immediately.
For purposes of, for purposes of record.
Yeah.
Mister Speaker.
Those who are in favor of the, uh, Parcasio amendments, please raise your, yeah?
Well, Mister Speaker, we did not go through the other amendments. Can we just include that in the voting also? Because I stopped at section thirty, but there's also section thirty-one which is monitoring of assemblies so that we don't go through.
Yeah, that's why I am, I already, uh, talked is at Parcasio amendments.
Up to section thirty-two, Mister.
As to, uh, all Parcasio amendments, we are dealing here with all Parcasio amendments as far as the N M I P is concerned. All of those, uh, from what section? Please, uh, state, uh, the beginning of the section.
Can we go down? Section twenty-five, Mister Speaker.
Up to?
Thirty-two.
There is now a motion to de-divide the, to divide the house from section twenty-four to thirty-two. All of the, uh, from section twenty-five to thirty-two, all of these are Parcasio amendments. All of those who are in favor of the Parcasio amendments, please raise your hands. All of those who are not in favor of the Parcasio amendments, please raise your hands. Secretariat, do you have the results?
Mister Speaker, the result of the division of the house on article four, section twenty-five to section thirty-two. For those in favor of the amendments, we have ten votes. For those not in favor of or not favoring the amendments, we have forty-six votes.
The amendment is rejected.
Mister Speaker, we go to, uh, election of traditional leaders. There's a proposal coming from M P Makasalong, uh, pertaining to section thirty-one, which is on the manner of elections of traditional leaders. It reads this way, each sultanate shall be given equal opportunity on rotational basis to represent the traditional leaders in the parliament as a sectoral representative. For this purpose, the Bangsa Moro Commission for the Preservation of Cultural Heritage shall hold a regional convention of sultans representing the sultanates of A, Sulu, B, Magindanao, Kabuntalan and Buayan, C, Ranau, D, Iranun. For the purpose of determining the order by which each of the sultanate shall represent the sector in the parliament. The result of this convention shall be submitted to the B E O. The B E O shall then call an intra-sultanate assembly of the relevant sultanate to determine from among its members the traditional leader to occupy the parliamentary seat, Mister Speaker.
There is another proposed amendment, amendment from M P Loong, should we read it also?
Can we go up while the, can we go to M P Don Loong first? Uh, pro- amendment, proposed amendment. Uh, manner of election, traditional leaders shall Uh, manner of election, traditional leader shall be given equal opportunity to become a member of the parliament as a sectoral representative on a rotational basis. In addition with the coordination with the B E O, the Bangsa Moro Commission on the Preservation of Cultural Heritage shall hold an intra-sultanate assembly for the purpose of electing the representative of each sultanate that shall represent them in the inter-sultanate convention. Thereafter, the interner- inter-sultanate assembly shall be held to elect the sultanate that shall represent the sector as traditional leader in the parliament for the immediately succeeding term. Provided that the sultanate which has already served a term in the parliament is automatically disqualified unless all the other sultanates have previously served their terms.
Mister Speaker, we do not accept the proposed amendment uh from M P Don Loong, but we accept the proposed amendment from M P Makasalong.
Secretariat, please take note that the Makasalong amendment has been accepted.
We go to another proposal coming from M P Don Loong to introduce two new sections. Uh, the first being on vacancy. In case of death, permanent disability, incapacity, or refusal to perform duties and responsibilities of the elected traditional leader representative, the nominating sultanate shall hold an intra-sultanate convention within fifteen days after the vacancy to elect the successor who shall serve the unexpired term. The name of the successor shall be submitted to the comelect through the B E O. The comelect shall proclaim the successor as the new representative.
Mister Speaker, we accept with modification and uh as to the placement and to place the same in the common provisions for N M I P, traditional leaders, and ulama. It would read section blank, vacancy in the N M I P traditional, traditional and ulama sectoral seats. Traditional leaders and ulama sectoral seats, in case of death, permanent disability, incapacity, or refusal to perform duties and responsibilities of the elected sectoral representative, the nominating sector shall hold a special assembly and convention within fifteen days after the vacancy to elect the successor who shall serve the unexpired term. The procedure prescribed in the election process for the affected sector shall be observed.
Secretariat, please take note that the proposed amendment has been accepted with modification. Floor Leader.
Uh, going to section thirty four, Mister Speaker, M P Don Loong proposes that there be a section on the effect of failure to elect representative in the intra-sultanate assembly. It will read this way, in the event that the sultanate fails to elect the representative in an intra-sultanate assembly or convention, they shall be deemed to have waived their right to participate in the inter-sultanate assembly for that election.
We do not accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note that the proponent has rejected the proposed amendment.
Mister Speaker, one minute suspension, Mister Speaker. One minute suspension.
One minute suspension.
I think there's a manifestation coming from the proponent in relation to section thirty three, thirty three or?
Yes, Mister Speaker, when we um, when we announced that we accept with modification, the proposed amendment of M P Loong, um, I would like to, uh, we, we would like to add a a phrase that reads consistent with the rule on rotation, so that it will read in case of death, permanent disability, incapacity, or refusal to perform duties and responsibilities of the elected sectoral representative, the nominating sector shall hold a special assembly and convention within fifteen days after the vacancy to elect the successor who shall serve the unexpired term, comma, consistent with the rule on rotation. The procedure prescribed in the election process for the affected sector shall be observed. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note of the modification.
Okay, we move to section, to the next provision uh pertaining to section thirty three of the bill. There's a proposal coming from M P Miswari uh to add the phrase an equal opportunity for representing, representation on the basis of rotation uh in relation to the first paragraph of said provision, Mister Speaker.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note that the proposed amendment, Miswari amendment has been accepted.
In relation to section thirty four, Mister Speaker, there's a manifestation coming from the chair of the committee.
Yes, there is a manifestation uh that the, in the attached copy, uh, in the distributed clean copy, we reflected the correct language, but in the committee report, the attached copy reflects this language which was uh brought to our attention by M P, I forget who. Pero sinabi niya na um hindi magkatugma, no? So that we stand by the clean version, the cleansed version uh that would read, that will participate in the Regional Ulama Convention and the criteria for participation taking consideration the track, track record of the delegates, full stop, Mister Speaker. Uh, it's a secretariat, um, I mean, con- maybe confusion in the distribution, Mister.
So this commit, this, this proposal here is no longer considered? Or this one is considered?
Uh, yes, Mister Speaker, in order to be consistent with the intention of the committee on rules to adopt this language, which is para hindi lang maconfused because they are different in the clean copy atsaka dun sa attached to the committee report.
Secretariat, please take note. Floor Leader, we proceed.
Yes, we go to section thirty six, Mister Speaker, there's a proposal coming from M P Ampatuan to uh insert the phrase through the B E O after the word comelect.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
With respect to section thirty eight, Mister Speaker, the same proposal is uh forwarded by M P Ampatuan. We go to section.
Secretariat, please take note of the two proposed uh amendments have been accepted.
Article five, can we go down? Article six. Okay, coming from M P Makatanong, Mister Speaker, to introduce a section on review and annulment of book of voters. I think he expounded on this that this was proposed and this was accepted in the committee level.
Mister Speaker, we accept, Mister Speaker.
And on chapter one of article uh section one, anong article? Seven, on election administration. There's a proposal coming from M P Don Loong to add a paragraph uh regarding the effect of the running for office or by rece- accepting a nomination uh on the appointive uh officer.
Effect of acceptance kasi 'yung kanina. Ito, oo, cert- candidates holding appointive office to our positions, magkaiba po.
So there's a proposal for the second paragraph.
We do not accept, Mister Speaker.
And then on section four, Mister Speaker, I think we discussed this already.
This has been settled already. We proceed with the uh next provision.
Can we move down? To section six, there's a proposal coming from M P Lim. Uh, first to renumber section six to, so that it becomes section nine. Uh, and then for section nine to, to, to include section nine on substitution of candidates, Mister Speaker.
Uh, we do not accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note, the proponent did not accept the proposed amendment of M P Lim.
Uh, on section seven, Mister Speaker, there's a proposal to include the word political after the word regional.
We accept, Mister Speaker. Yung renumbering, okay pa rin 'yan.
And a proposal coming from M P Lim to renumber section seven to section six and section eight to section seven.
Uh, matter of style, Mister Speaker, we do not act on it, Mister Speaker.
Okay, on section nine, Mister Speaker, also a renumbering coming from M P Lim and also from M P uh Loong to introduce a new paragraph uh which will read this way, his or her name does not appear in the list of nominees of another party save in case, cases of a coalition or aggravation.
We accept with modification, Mister Speaker, to read his to read, his or her name does not appear in the list of nominees of another party except in cases of a coalition. Full stop, Mister Speaker.
All caps.
Full stop.
At full stop.
Sa coalition.
Okay, on.
Secretariat, please take note.
On section twelve, uh, the proposal of M P Ampatuan is to delete the word comelect uh in the whole provision, Mister Speaker. And also that is the proposal for the next uh section.
Yes, we accept both, Mister Speaker.
Uh, there's a proposal to include section sixteen uh from M P Alamiya uh to include a section on ballot structure. The official ballots of the BARM elections shall include, aside from the name of all candidates, each candidate's photo slash logo and the option to vote for none of the above. The comelect through the B E O shall take efforts to ensure that the Bangsa Moro people are aware of all candidates running for elections in the BARM.
Mister Speaker, we accept with nomination. To make the title.
With modification.
Yes, to make the ti- to change the title to official ballot and that it will read, as far as practicable, the official ballots for the BARM elections shall include comma, aside from the name of all candidates, comma, each candidate's photo or slash logo and a none of the above option, period. The comelect through the B E O shall take efforts to ensure that the Bangsa Moro people are aware of all candidates running for elections in the BARM.
Secretariat, please take note that the proponent has accepted the amendment with modification.
There's a proposal, Mister Speaker, to amend section one, um for coming from M P Ampatuan to change the word commission to comelect.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Also coming from M P Ampatuan, uh, with respect to section three, uh, the amendment is to change, um, to include the phrase through the B E O.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Rather than comelect B E O. Hmm, malapit na.
Meron, meron, meron. Ups, 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 ups.
Balik, balik.
Balik, balik, balik.
On section forty two, Mister Speaker, there's a proposal coming from M P Mastura. Uh, it will read this way, there shall be a regional board of canvassers for votes cast for party representatives under the system of proportional representation composed of the head of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Office as chairman, the regional prosecutor, and the regional treasurer treasurer as members. The Commission on Elections shall provide for the rules on the manner of canvassing of votes for party representatives under the system of proportional representation.
Mister Speaker, we do not accept, Mister Speaker.
You accept the.
We do not accept.
You do not. Mister Speaker, may I be heard? I'd just like to point out that uh there's no board of canvassers for the party list, or the, rather, the party representatives. Did you provide for it?
There's another.
Yes, Mister Speaker, paragraph two.
Okay, uh, that's all Mister Speaker just wanted.
You're withdrawing your proposed amendment.
I, I, I would like to see first the, the provision upstairs. Okay.
Go, go pa. Sige pa. Sige pa.
Where is it?
Sige, there.
Okay, uh, that's, I, I accept that and I withdraw my amendment. Secretariat, please take note that the proponent of the amendment has withdrawn his proposed amendment.
On section fourteen, Mister Speaker, and section fifteen, a proposal coming from M P, M P Ampatuan uh is, the proposal is to change Commission on Elections to comelect.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
And then on section eight, I think this is a new uh provision uh to insert a provision on the prosecution of vote buying and vote selling, Mister Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the proponent?
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Uh, section two of Article Nine, Mister Speaker, uh, M P Ampatuan proposes to change the word commission to comelect.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
On transitory provision, section one, the proposal is to, coming from M P Ampatuan, is to change uh accredited into registered sectoral organization.
We accept with modifica- modification, Mister Speaker, uh, in that portion called for the purpose by registered and accredited, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note that it has been accepted with modification and that the proposed amendment of M P Alamia a while ago was also accepted.
Uh, on section four, Mister Speaker, the proposal coming from M P Alamia.
This has already been, this has already been uh deleted already a while ago.
Subsidy fund, but there's a proposal on, to include section four uh on, on transitory limitation on the power to dissolve the parliament upon the vote upon a vote of no confidence, Mister Speaker.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
And then from M P Don Loong, to uh, to include another section on the establishment of regional political parties, uh the proposal is to have the five thousand members, but also the requirement that a provision, provincial chapter uh is required to have municipal chapters. This is part of the transitory provisions, I think, Mister Speaker. But the second paragraph. So we've already decided.
We do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
And then.
Yes, the proposed ah Loong amendment is no longer accepted.
Okay.
Both in the first paragraph and in the second paragraph.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Ah section sixteen to introduce another section. Ah saying that notwithstanding the provisions of section eight. Article four, the members of the Bangsa Mora Transition Authority may continue to hold. Even after acceptance of their nominations and shall not be considered ipso facto resigned.
We we do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note that the two long amendments has been rejected.
There are no other proposed amendments, Mr. Speaker.
Somebody should move for the termination of the period of amendment.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move to close the period of amendment.
There's a motion to terminate the period of amendment, it's been seconded. The period of amendment is now terminated. We will now proceed with the approval.
Mr. Speaker, ah I think there's an appeal coming from MP Amboloto. To introduce a an amendment with respect to ah election offenses. Which was not included in the matrix, Mr. Speaker.
One minute suspension. Session resumes.
Mr. Speaker, I appealed a while ago that we reopen considering the. Ah request coming from MP Amboloto. I think the proposal is.
If there is no objection to the reopening of the period of amendment. We will reopen the period of amendment.
Ah the proposal, Mr. Speaker, is to delete the whole. Ah all the provisions pertaining to election. Ah offenses under Article eight, miss. Ah, election contest? Election contest under chapter three of Article seven. At ah section one to sixteen. Mr. Speaker, of Article seven.
We do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, yeah, we will hear you. Ah, Mr. Speaker, ah we note, Mr. Speaker. Ah that these are procedures that are already provided for under the rules of court or the rules of the Commission on Elections. And so it may not, ah it does not, ah I am not, I'm not sure how it found its way. Into our law, which by itself is already good. Ah so I suggest that inasmuch as these are within the proper province or jurisdiction of the Supreme Court or. The Commission on Elections in the in the exercise of the rulemaking power over procedures under the courts of the Commission Election. I respectfully, most respectfully submit. That we consider deleting the entire provision on election contests and inasmuch as it does not have. Fine proper, suppose proper in place in our law, Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the proponent?
Mr. Speaker, ah we do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
Um, Mr. Speaker, inasmuch that I, ah. Ah I was supposed to be a, ano, Mr. Speaker, I move for the division of the House on the matter, Mr. Speaker.
May we hear the ah wisdom of the.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I support the view of my esteemed colleague, a former election officer. Because the matter is jurisdictional. And it is also provided for already in the law, whether we include it here or not. Jurisdictional jurisdictional limitations. And the deline- the the delineation of the of the jurisdiction of the comelec, the courts and the are already well defined. Therefore, it is only surpluses, but the implication is we will be courting a lot of question. If we include this. But if we will not include this, it will not be a disadvantage to the BARM. To all of us because it is already provided by national law and.
One minute suspension.
Session resumes.
Mister Speaker, I think there's a counter proposal coming from the committee chair.
May we see the counter proposal?
Mister Speaker, um I'm sorry that I was not able to pass the language to the secretariat to reflect it on the screen. But um the counter proposal is to uh change section two. Can we show the? Itto na ba yon? Okay, so secretariat please um we propose to delete on election contests in the title of the section uh section two, so it will read only jurisdiction. And then we add uh a phrase, a beginning phrase that would read pursuant to section two comma article nine of the nineteen eighty seven constitution. Nine C, nine C. Nine C, article nine C.
Roban, you may resign. Oo, gina gina konya gina hindi siya doon doon.
Of the nineteen eighty seven constitution.
May I ask the proponent of the amendment to look at the draft of the uh proponent of the bill, the counter proposal?
Yung yung and then the section the section three and section four language will be inserted as section a second paragraph and third paragraph of section two. So that we will delete sections three and four. Okay, uh and uh can we remove shal after the courts? Regional trial courts have exclusive jurisdiction. Remove shal. Same thing with the okay, this is uh the counter proposal, Mister Speaker.
What the first shal in the first paragraph? The comelac shal?
Uh the comelac exercises. Yes, Mister. Thank you for pointing that out, Mister Speaker.
Pleasure of the proponent of the amendment. Secretariat, please take note that the proponent of the bill has accepted the proposed amendment with modification.
Considering, Mister Speaker, that we have taken up all the proposed amendments, I move to close the
There's no motion to terminate the period of amendment. It's been seconded. The period of amendment is now terminated.
Mister Speaker, I move to approve on second reading by Viva Vote, uh B T A bill number twenty nine.
There there is a motion to approve on second reading proposed B T A bill number twenty nine by Viva Vote, she votes thirty second. There being no objection, the motion is approved. We will we will proceed with the voting Viva Vote. Those who are in favor of B T A bill those who are not in favor say nay. It is a resounding victory for B T A bill number twenty nine.
Mister Speaker, considering that uh B T A bill number thirty nine has been certified as an urgent bill, uh we can move to the we move that the three day requirement be dispensed with and that we be allowed to print uh copies of the bill as approved on second reading and then proceed to the third reading, Mister Speaker thereafter.
There's a motion to proceed on third reading. Third and final reading. Ah please wait for my uh resolution and the motion. There being no objection, we we will proceed on third and final reading subject to the printing of the final copies of the uh approved bill. Session suspended for five minutes.
A bill number twenty-nine.
The rule is we will have a nominal voting. We will allow only an explanation of vote of up to one minute. So if others can uh
Mr. Speaker, what if the speech or the explanation of votes pass uh one minute? Will you allow us to finish?
We will, I will allow you to finish.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker for the clarification.
But okay, we will proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to exercise my right to speak for a minute and explain my vote. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I am voting yes to the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code as passed on second reading and deliberated upon by all the members, majority of the members of this August Parliament. At the same time, Mr. Speaker, there were proposals for more women inclusion and the different marginalized sectors inclusion and political participation in the regional political parties that I will continue to pursue, which were not included in this uh electoral code. Nevertheless, I commend the entire Bangsa Moro Parliament for all of our contributions, your contributions to improve and enhance the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code as we are about to pass this now. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My vote is yes.
Allow then Musbir. Ali Ibrahim. Ali Lanang Junior.
Mr. Speaker, I have my one-minute explanation of my vote.
You may proceed.
Mr. Speaker, Bangsa Moro Electoral Code or Bangsa Moro uh Bill, Parliament Bill Number Twenty-One, Mr. Speaker, has undergo a series of consultations, engagement with the COMLEC. Mr. Speaker, the constitutionality of Bangsa Moro Organic Law, Mr. Speaker, has already been passed to the House of Representatives and the Senate and approved by the President. There was, there was a thorough scrutiny, no less than the Congress of the Philippines, that the BOL is constitutional. Mr. Speaker, the provisions of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code since yesterday, I have heard to my fellow MPs, all the provisions, Mr. Speaker, they declared this a reasonable ideal and there is nothing wrong with the provisions of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. So therefore, Mr. Speaker, I believe that this Bangsa Moro Electoral Code, the approval of the VAC is a historical moment for us because this is the first time, Mr. Speaker, that a parliamentary elections in two thousand twenty-five will be held in the Bangsa Moro homeland. My vote is yes, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Ali Idi.
Mr. Speaker, please allow me to explain my vote.
Proceed.
All distinguished Chief Minister, Ahud Ibrahim, esteemed Speaker Pangalian Balindong, fellow members of the Bangsa Moro Parliament, staff of the BTA. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuhu.
Please silent, remain silent.
Bismillah walhamdulillah wassalat wassalamuala rassulillah. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuhu. My vote is yes. In fact, a resounding yes. My yes vote for the BTA Bill Number Twenty-Nine or the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code is a milestone in the Bangsa Moro quest. The significance and indispensability of this piece of legislation cannot be stressed enough saying that we need this law because it is our legal obligation to enact it under Republic Act eleven zero five four is, in my opinion, an oversimplification. Just saying that is, it is service to the real essence of this crucial act of the Parliament. It is definitely more than that. It is more than just a legal mandate. We are making history here because this is a major shifting point in the political landscape of our region. We are giving birth to something Philippine politics has never seen before. This is because of three operative concepts: asymmetry, innovative reforms, and legacy. The electoral system that we are institutionalizing here is a manifestation of the asymmetrical nature of the Bangsa Moro government vis-à-vis the national government. The asymmetry is there because it is a manifestation of a greater autonomy than we ever had. We are carving our own political path because the Bangsa Moro identity demands a system unique and impeccable to our needs and context. What's the point of autonomy if we are just copy-pasting and mimicking a system that has proven not to work and that has been forced on a nation with a completely distinct way of life? Secondly, this new system is introducing innovative reforms that would fix the problems that have corrupted our electoral system for a very long time. It will shift the paradigm of the Bangsa Moro voters to a more principled and platform-based choice of leadership. We will finally have an electoral code custom-fitted to a parliamentary system of governance, requiring at least thirty percent women in party representation, eradication of monopoly of power through the anti-political dynasty provision, and much more. The provision of this elec- elec- election code have addressed this, Insha Allah. Lastly, despite all the harsh criticisms and the immense political pressure from all sides, I love this August Day for the amazing patience or sabar in going through the rigorous process of public consultations and hearings, intense deliberations and debates, and for just the sheer effort of every one of us in going around the provinces, cities, and islands of our region just to hear the voices of our constituents and stakeholders as regards this crucial piece of legislation. That is because the passage of this statute enables the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority to leave behind a legacy that would leave a mark on our history and that would fulfill the purpose of our jihad. At the end of the day, the election code is a representation of the demands of the people for a better election system, better leadership, and a better life for us all. Insha Allah. I ask Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala to grant us Taufeeq in passing this law and make it beneficial for the Bangsa Moro people and accept it as an ibadah visabilillah. Wa bi lahi taufiq wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuhu.
Ambolotu, suharto.
Mr. Speaker.
Proceed.
Uh allow me to use my one-minute in extending my commendation and gratitude, first and foremost, to the Cabinet Committee who has initiated our journey in the drafting of the uh election code. Again, also, I would like to reiterate and reaffirm our recognition of the devotion, dedication, and hard work that has been invested by the floor leader and committee, and the Committee on Rules that he chairs, and also the deputy floor leaders. And again, also, we would like to commend these presiding officers, Presiding Officer Nabiltan, Presiding Officer uh Tanang Ali, and Presiding Officer Attorney Omar Sema for the generous space that you have allotted all the members of the Parliament for us to be able to enrich. And again, I also commend members of this parliament who has contributed a lot in enriching and trying to provide and develop a better, a good uh Bangsa Moro election code. And of course, we would also have to congratulate our speaker for shepherding and being the captain of our ship and being able to deliver, at least tonight, to our honorable Chief Minister, the first deliverable under the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority. I vote yes.
Aminu din Abdullah Ziz. Ampatuan ba intan.
Mr. Speaker, may I have my one-minute? Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuhu. Unang-unah ang gusto kong sabihin ay isa ako sa masayang tao ngayong gabi. Um nakita ko po 'yung proseso simula sa public consultations, papunta doon sa Committee on Rules, at ngayon dito sa plenary. For the first time, Mr. Speaker, nagkaroon po tayo ng very smooth na proseso sa lahat nung pinagdaanan na proseso na meron tayo. And I would like to commend the leadership of the floor leader for this effort. Hindi dahil membro ako ng Committee on Rules, pero nagmamasid ako sa lahat ng ating ginagawa dahil ito ay parte ng historical history, history na ng ating Bangsa Moro. At uh Mr. Speaker, actually, hindi ko ma-express 'yung gusto kong sabihin dahil very overwhelming 'yung nakita ko na pagbabago. Pagbabago sa proseso, hindi ko man nakuha 'yung gusto kong mangyari. Nagpaboto man ako at natalo ako, nanalo pa rin tayong lahat. Sa mga kababahian, patuloy po ang ating advocacy. Marami pa tayong kailangan gawain, ngunit ito ay isang tagumpay. Noway, wag tayong magsawa at patuloy tayong ipaglaban. Noway, wag tayong magsawa at patuloy tayong ipaglaban. Lalong-lalo pa ngayon na pataon ang pagpasan ng isang landmark legislation sa araw ng pagdiriwang ng Kabuanan o International Women's Day. Mabuhay ang mga kababahian, mabuhay ang Bangsa Moro. My vote is a resounding yes.
Anayatin Susana?
Mr. Speaker, may I use my one-minute privilege? Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Isang magandang gabi po sa ating lahat, sa ating Chief Minister, sa ating Speaker, sa ating lahat nandiito ngayon. Isa na namang makasaysayang araw para sa ating lahat. We saw that democracy is at work this very day. Isang malaking karangalan po na maging bahagi ng grupong ito na nagsusulong ng political struggle. So, bilang kabahagi niyo po sa pagsusulong ng sariling pagpapasya, eh kinagagalak ko po mula noon hanggang ngayon. Patuloy po ang suporta ko sa struggle na ito. Kaya, Mr. Speaker, bumaboto po ako ng yes.
Antao Muhammad Gilley?
Mr. Speaker? Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Rabbis rahli sadri, wayas sirli amri wahlul uk datam milli sani yahkaukauk wabadassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuhu. Isang makasaysayang gabi para sa Bangsa Moro. Na ang pagpasan ng itong batas na ito, ukod na ito, para po sa translation ng advokasya ng ating mahal na Chief Minister ng moral governance. Ituna ang sasamang daan upang may sakatuparan ang advokasya na ito. Na ang pagbabago sa Bangsa Moro ay magmula sa political struggles, sa political exercises na kunsaan minsan 'yan ang pinagmula ng hindi pagkakaintindihan. Dahil po sa napaka-ganda ng proseso na pinupuntahan ang bawat mamayan at sa mga expert na nagbigyan ng kanilang mga suggestion, palagay ko po, hindi man ito perpekto, pero ito'y isang batas na magpalakas ng advokasya ng ating Chief Minister na magkaroon ng moral governance. Kaya po sa gabing ito, isang makasaysayan na yes ang aking duto.
Arnado Mirian?
Mr. Speaker, I am voting yes to the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code for four reasons. First, it has a very strong anti-political dynasty provision, which is first in our country. Second, it also has very good provision on climate change adaptation and environment by encouraging the use of non-biodegradable substances in our campaign paraphernalia. I think this is another innovation in the Bangsa Moro that we can be truly proud of. Third, is the women-friendly provision, which sets a quota of thirty percent for the representation of women in the political parties. This is a big step. We can still improve on this, but this is something that we can already celebrate as a victory for the Bangsa Moro women. Fourth, we are setting a very good precedent by laying the foundation for the establishment and strengthening of strong political party, which is first in the country. We can be the model, we can be the example of setting the good, of setting the best example of legislation that will encourage electoral reform and introducing new politics that only in the Bangsa Moro but in entire country. I vote yes. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
As now we done? Your vote here? Babao Ali Muntaha? Balindong Pangalian?
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. I assure you that my explanation is much, much shorter than the explanation of the Honorable MP Idi Ali. Chief Minister, Ahud Balawag Ibrahim, my colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu. Today is a historic day for the Bangsa Moro Parliament. As we decide the fate of the landmark legislation that will not only force political reforms, but more importantly, rehabilitate the electoral system in our homeland. For decades, our elections have been demonized with corruption, irregularities, and violence, which to some extent is a fair criticism. But the sad thing is that these evil practices are perpetrated by only a few and that a majority of the electorate have become their unwilling victims because of a flawed electoral system. This is a chance, therefore, for all of us to rectify the system that contributed to our political degeneration and become a source of cultural shame. It is an opportune time for us to set a new stage for our future leaders to lead our people by simplifying honesty, equality, and empowering the true voice of democracy. Ladies and gentlemen, my dear colleagues, I plead to you those who have not yet voted to give your final stamp of approval to the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. I vote yes. Yes, yes.
Basman Ana Tarhata?
Audubillahiminasyaitane Rajim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Mr. Speaker, in my four years as a member of the parliament, at dahil na pagutusan po ko, I am taking the podium for the first time to explain my vote on what I feel is a matter that in all the noise, all the hoopla during the past days, weeks, and months that we've undergone the legislative process for this bill bears stressing. Mr. Speaker, I vote yes for the bill that defines the only election in the country that has strengthened and cemented women's participation in real and practical terms. Mr. Speaker, una po sa party building, tayo lamang po ang nagrequire ng concrete women's agenda bago mag-register ang isang political party. Sa decision-making bodies po, ng lahat ng political parties, required ang healthy participation ng mga kababahian. At pati sa nomination ng kanila mga kandato, required na merong mga kababahian at hindi sila maiiwan. At hindi po dyan natatapos ang comfort at magrespeto sa mga kababahian during elections ay ginagarrantiya. Mr. Speaker, atin pong pinagmamalaki na hindi ito mahahanap sa kahit sa ang sulok ng ating bansa. Mr. Speaker, your colleagues is not going to be long, but I hope to reiterate that it is only fitting that this huge leap for women's meaningful political participation, which traces its roots in the Comprehensive Agreement on the Bangsa Moro, is entrenched in the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code, not just on Women's Month, but also in International Women's Day. This is us showing the world once again that when it comes to gender rights, gender justice, the Bangsa Moro is not just competing, but is at the forefront. Maraming salamat po, my vote is yes.
Kandao Bai Malija? Dilanggaliin Hasimi?
Mr. Speaker, may I be recognized? Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I take great pride and honor in participating in this historical enactment of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code, which will shape the Bangsa Moro for the years to come. It is my hope that the enactment of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code will bring us unity rather than divide us or rupture our solidarity. It is my hope that the enactment of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code will bring a new and a better day to the Bangsa Moro. At higit sa lahat, naniniwala ako na pagaprova ng itong batas ay para sa kapakanan ng sambayan ng Bangsa Moro. For the Bangsa Moro, I voted yes to the proposed Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuhu.
Dumama Alba Ilija, Sya Ilija?
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum and magandang gabi po sa ating lahat, sa ating mahal na Chief Minister, sa ating mahal na Speaker, Deputy Speakers, fellow floor leaders, at sa lahat po ng members ng parliament dito. I would like to honor the other women who were also the brains of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. At lahat po ng mga kasamahan dito, first time, first time ko pong first time because during the budget appropriations Act, ako po, I missed it, but you challenged me, you inspire me, and you bring out the best and worst in me. So, maraming-maraming salamat po sa experience na ito. Lahat ng ito ay hindi po mangyayari, hindi po sa tulong ng Allah. Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, all successes and blessings come from Him. And I vote yes, Mr. Speaker. Maraming-maraming-salamat po.
Ibrahim Ahud? Ismail Suhalto?
Mr. Speaker, honorable members of the August body, Republic Act eleven zero fifty-four mandated this August body to pass an electoral code providing a system to serve the best interests of the Bangsa Moro people who experienced decades of conflicts and instability due to political disagreement amongst different groups. Consequently, today we aim to address this issue by providing greater autonomy and self-determination for the region's constituents. The Bangsa Moro Electoral Code does not only provide a legal basis for holding free and fair elections, it ensures equal representation regardless of political affiliation or ethnic background. The approval of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code will be instrumental in promoting peaceful and inclusive democracy in the region, a crucial step toward long-term stability and development. The provision, providing more room for the women to participate in governance, is a breakthrough. It gave a principle of inclusivity, a breadth of life by recognizing the importance of women in leading the Bangsa Moro people in attaining its aspiration. A snappy salute to all Bangsa Moro women. Happy International Women's Day. With this, my vote is yes in favor of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. Pagpalain Bangsa Moro.
Estino Matarol?
Mr. Speaker, allow me to give my message. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuhu. Mr. Speaker, esteemed member of this most august body, before I express my stand on the facets of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code, please allow me to commend the men and women behind the crafting of the first electoral code for the Bangsa Moro, our colleagues who participated in the lengthy discussion on the proposed law, paper by paper, words per word, just to provide the Bangsa Moro with a comprehensive and encompassing electoral system forged with the will of the people. Let us not drift away from what really drove us to establish this transition government. We have to uphold the willpower of the people. The very interest of the Bangsa Moro is of the far amount importance over our personal feelings. Today, we have been given the autonomy as embedded in the Bangsa Moro Organic Law to fully govern ourselves, and we have to exercise such autonomy to the fullest as long as it is within the ambit of the Philippine Constitution and Islamic principle. And I respectfully believe, Mr. Speaker, that the proposed Bangsa Moro Electoral Code is an exercise of such autonomy and reflect the true sentiments of our people. Hence, I vote yes in favor of the passage of Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu.
Gayak Abdullah? Gira Edward?
Okay, my vote is a giant yes. We have gone into proper process of crafting this bill. And I'm confident that it will send a very positive message to the entire PDPs, especially to the national government. All I can say, I'm confidently say, na mukhang hinug na ang parliament. Hinug na ang mga membro ng parliament, naging bright na po sila.
Is your vote? What is your vote? Haji Abdullah Kalib? Hasim Abdullah?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My courtesy is first to our dear Chief Minister, Hafidholah, and to our Parliament Speaker, Hafidholah. I would also like to congratulate the floor leader and mga kasama niya. And my fellow members of the Committee on Rules, I would also like to congratulate us and sa lahat ng members of the parliament who participated in this exercise. Mr. Speaker, we need stability, peace, and security. We need a stable and truly autonomous regional government upon upon which our Bangsa Moro nation will stand. Therefore, Mister Speaker, in consideration of our history and struggle as a people, and in consideration of the blood, sweat, and tears of those before us, and in consideration of the agreements that have been signed and agreed upon after so much laborious decades, and upon our mandate, Mister Speaker, I vote for a resounding yes.
Hassan Hatimil?
Please turn on the microphone of uh, the Deputy uh, Speaker, Hassan.
Sorry. My uh, vote is yes, Mister Speaker. Pero sa ngayon palang, I'd already like to complain. You have to support ang kandidato ng Moro Islamic Liberation Front at ang Moro National Liberation Front. Dahil sila po ang nag-stretch for almost forty, fifty years para matamo natin ang autonomiya at ang self-determination ng Bangsa Moro. Ang mga kandidato ng Moro Islamic Liberation Front at Moro National Liberation Front, I'm sure they'll be there to protect and keep safe ang autonomian natin na nakuhan natin through sacrifices uh, for a long years of sacrifices. And at the same time, Mister Speaker, I'd like to appeal to all leaders of political parties to see to it, to distribute their nominees to all the five component, to all the component provinces and cities of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in order to achieve equitable representation in the Bangsa Moro Parliament, Mister Speaker. For that, Mister Speaker, again, my vote is yes.
Iqbal Mahagir?
Millahi Rahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh. My question, Tuhan and Sandri. Meru po bang mas makabuluhan na boto kundi yes? I don't think there is a need for me to explain further why I voted yes for this very important piece of legislation. I hope no one will dispute me in this regard. And I know, alam ko, judging from the body languages of everyone in this August hall, that no one is going to vote no for this Electoral Code, Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. So dahil doon, my bet, my vote is yes, yes, yes. Maraming salamat.
Ismail Rasul? Jajuri Raisa?
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Uh, Mister Speaker, it has been a privilege for me to be part of the process of building the Bangsa Moro. Certainly, the enactment of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code, as what we are about to do, will lead us to that direction as this will pave the way to the elections of the regular Bangsa Moro government in two thousand twenty-five. I was privileged to be part of the peace negotiations between the government and the Moro Islamic Liberation Front in the drafting of the Bangsa Moro Basic Law and now in the work of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority. But I want to pay homage to all those who were part of the struggle of the Bangsa Moro for the right to self-determination. Mister Speaker, I also want to greet all the women, especially my fellow Bangsa Moro women, and those who also accompanied us in this journey. A happy International Women's Day! Let's celebrate and be inspired by the Cota and the gender policies that are provided in this law so that we can participate more uh, and continue the journey. Mister Speaker, I vote yes.
Jakilan Muslimin? Jikiri Albakil? Kahalan Din Martin? Karun Faisal? Lim Jan Anthony?
Uh, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuh. Actually, nagprepare po ako ng mahabang speech, ano po? But after listening to my idol, MP Eddie Ali, I yield to his wisdom. Kasi sabi ng tatay at nanay ko, respect your elders. But seriously, there are three things I wanted to share today at tonight, no? First, my sincerest congratulations to the members of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority, both the BTA one and the present BTA two, who are instrumental in the passage, eventual pa-passage of this um, important legislative measure. My congratulations as well to our leader, our Speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, and of course, uh, our Chief Minister, Honorable Ahud B. Ibrahim. I also take this opportunity to extend my apology for any excesses or deficiencies in actions or demeanors during the deliberations in the committee as well as in the plenary. Finally, I seek guidance, personal as well as uh, collective in behalf of uh, this uh, plenary, in behalf of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority, we seek uh, guidance from Allah for continuous blessing, wisdom, as we strive for our better lives, for our people, for God, for country and our region, and for our people. Mabuhay, and I vote yes for BTA twenty-nine. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuh.
Loong Benjamin? Loong Don Mustafa?
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuh. Again, I would like to reiterate my commendation to the leaders and officers of the Parliament and to the Cabinet Committee as well as the Committee on Rules for steering the ship towards the enactment of this priority code that will be used as basis as we conduct the first parliamentary elections in two thousand twenty-five. Today is a celebration of uh, Women's Month, and I particularly commend the power of the Moro women to steward uh, that had influenced a lot in uh, helping steward the most challenging legislation of the Bangsa Moro Parliament. Uh, we all know our uh, women leaders here. Can we just give them a round of applause, please? You know, I have a, a reflection and realization that while we celebrate the thirty percent inclusion of women in the allocated seats, my realization is that numbers alone do not determine the empowerment of our women. The fact, their competence, uh, credibility, character, and the special way of managing things with high detail yet with compassion makes them very effective. And so, may they be an inspiration to the, all the other Bangsa Moro women out there to, to strengthen their competence and improve their capacity. And let that also be an inspiration to the Bangsa Moro government to continue to empower the women and the girls and provide opportunities for them for growth, leadership, and service. Next, the enactment of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, this piece of legislation, is a test testament to our autonomy as we have crafted an elective process that tailor fits our needs as a people with different ideologies but yearns for the same progressive future. Though the process was tiring and long, we had to make sure that all policies are inclusive enough to enable the conduct of free, orderly, honest, peaceful, and credible elections reflective of genuine will of the electorate. And that the measure we present turn away from the usual popular personality-based politics and focus on platform and ideology-based political party landscape that the parliamentary system offers. That being said, we also need to make sure that our current policies are airtight and would consider every possible scenario in two thousand twenty-five. On the final note, the heart of a parliamentary system is a free and open regional party system that will allow for the free choice by the people. In conclusion, I am confident that the collective wisdom of this parliament, the Electoral Code, will be morally sound and legislatively complete as we are gaining, again, a pioneering role that even the national is still trying to pass and enact. With the current moves to amend the nineteen eighty-seven Constitution and talks of possibly adopting a parliamentary system of government on a national scale, we must be proud that the Bangsa Moro again is placed under the lens as a model for the success of a parliamentary system. The pressure is upon us to make proof that the rest of the Philippines, that the parliamentary system works at the local level, and that the interests of the people are better represented in this system. By ensuring that the next election will be the most inclusive and culturally shaped for the Bangsa Moro, may we become champions of political development that all people long for in their own governments locally and internationally. With this, again, I thank the revolutionaries and the Bangsa Moro leaders and those who had sacrificed for us to be able to practice a more meaningful autonomy for the better welfare and futures of the Bangsa Moro people in particular and the Filipino people in general. I vote a resounding yes. Wa bilahi taufik wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuh.
Lorena Husi?
Mister Speaker, may I be allowed to explain my vote? Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. My courtesy and respect to our Chief Minister, Ahud Ibrahim, our Speaker, my brother, Attorney Ali Pangalian Balindong, esteemed colleagues, friends of the Bangsa Moro, guests. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuh. I thank the Almighty Allah for sustaining me in this long, steep journey for our self-determination and for peace. It has always been an honor to be a part of our historic journey for I have served in the peace process of the MNLF, peace process of the MIIF, in the autonomous region in Muslim Mindanao, and in concluding many of our agreements. It is truly a privilege to have participated in shaping Republic Act eleven zero five four. The passage of Bill twenty-nine, or our Electoral Code, permanently puts in place and establish the bedrock of our distinct identity. For we are truly the only parliament in the Philippines. Our demand for new entity in a parliamentary system has not been captured by many. But the passage of the Electoral Code will establish it. Secondly, the Electoral Code will define our future. Electoral Code will pave the way for the selection of better, brighter leaders to lead our people. For it is in this Electoral Code that we instruct a policy for strategic political policy such as regional political parties, district representation, and an equal representation to all brothers within the Bangsa Moro. This truly reflects the identity of the Bangsa Moro. The Electoral Code will also serve as a model for political transformation. It will transform with the Electoral Code. It will transform not only our political culture, but it will transform the political democracy in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region, which can even serve as the model for Philippine democracy. With all this, I think I should thank my colleagues, promote the leadership of the Bangsa Moro government through our Chief Minister, the leadership of the Parliament, and my esteemed colleagues for putting the collective will in their efforts to provide a lasting and meaningful legacy through this Electoral Code. The future is bright for our children. For it is this Electoral Code that will assure them that election in the Bangsa Moro will not be as hard as it is for many of us who cannot even be elected in our respective constituency because of the anomaly of political elections. Having said that, and in conclusion, I should thank the Ministerial Committee on the Electoral Code for bringing consultants and people to contribute to the shaping of the draft Electoral Code. And I should thank the members of the Rules Committee, not because I am one, because I'm an ex-fish member, but for giving their persia and their collective effort to draw the line between unconstitutionality and constitutionality. If there is any unconstitutional provision, it is just an oversight. For the intent of the committee was to make this law not only constitutional, operational, but functional. This is a task difficult to be achieved by weaklings. But I can now say that the Bangsa Moro leadership of the Parliament, as many will state, is not only qualified, but they are ready to govern. The entire Parliament is now put to task to give meaning to this Electoral Code by your vote, and many of us have voted yes. But truly, the test of this Electoral Code will come in two thousand twenty-five when we will put the final name to the bad politics of Philippine democracy. It will be a test for all of us. The result of two thousand twenty-five, the narrow way of paving the way for an inclusive representation within all of us, we're certainly sure whether we are in the right direction or not. Because the consequence of another anomaly by being selfish to me, to ourselves, and to our organization will never deter the progress of the Bangsa Moro. I vote yes because I firmly believe that we have given our intellectual share to this Electoral Code to assure a better and positive future for the Bangsa Moro. to assure a better and positive future for the Bangsa Moro, not only as a model of governance in the Philippines, but even to other shores outside the Philippines. On that note, again, thank you to the leadership of the parliament, thank you to the Rules Committee and thank you to all of you, my colleagues. I should congratulate and we should congratulate all of us for coming out with this Electoral Code. I vote yes and I vote yes for this Electoral Code. Wa bilahih taufik wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh.
Makakoa Abdol Raoh?
Siguraduit natin na nakaaon 'yung mic ah. Magatapos siguraduin natin na magandang screen na pagka kasi kagaya ni Poik kanina na maganda pala sa screen kung naka screen. So, talaga ngang boto ko is yes. Eh paano naman hindi ako babuto ng yes? Nasa lahat ng proseso ngayon palang ako nakatin. Kung mabuto pa ako ng negative, ano tingin niyo sa akin? Di kalukuha na yun. So, talaga ang boto ko, yes.
Makapaar Abdullah? Makasalong Marjani?
Uh Mister Speaker, can I have one minute and thirty-five seconds? Yo, leb one minute. Wa bilahih nasyetani radji, bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Of course, first and for of all, alhamdulillah because Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has allowed us to be part of the enactment of one of the most important measures that will affect the lives of the Bangsa Moro. The road to the passage of the proposed Bangsa Moro Electoral Code is long and exhausting and yet members of this august body continued to persevere just to make sure that this code is tailored to the needs of the Bangsa Moro. That is why I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate my colleagues, the Committee on Rules chaired by our no less than attorney, no other than attorney Saeleha Dumama Alba and the staff and the secretariat for all their efforts, sleepless nights and the like in the passage of the BTE Bill number thirty-five or twenty-nine. Twenty-nine. And we would also like to thank the Bangsa Moro people for the for their resonating support for this legislation. May Allah make this code an instrument for honest and fair elections, an election that would reflect the will of the Bangsa Moro and echo the voices of the marginalized. As we enact this code, let us be reminded that in Sora Anno verse fifty-five, Allah has promised those who have believed among you and done righteous deeds that will surely grant them succession or authority upon the earth just as granted to those before them. So my vote is also a giant yes. Thank you very much.
May ano kang giant? Also, ah. Makatanong Amrosi? Maglangit Tarhata?
Uh Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuhu. My vote is yes. Yes, because the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code will provide a space for us to realize our political struggle for our hula and our bangsa, but with reservations because I believe in a wider and bigger representation and participation of women in the parliament. Maraming salamat po.
Malik Hamid? Mantawil Biling?
Pangalans?
Mister Speaker, may I be allowed to dispense my one-minute speech? Okay, thank you. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu. Indeed, it's a beautiful day to all to because today is a very special day for all of us as we celebrate Women's Month. Mister Speaker, this is my first time to vote for the priority codes and I am very happy that I became part of this historic and memorable event. Mister Speaker, I want it to be meaningful and worthy to remember and be written in the history of the Bangsa Moro. Mister Speaker, my vote is reflective of the dreams and ideals of all the Bangsa Moro for a free, just, honest, credible and peaceful election in the Bangsa Moro region. As a child of war, my vote is dedicated to all those who have sacrificed for these dreams and ideals, the Bangsa Moro martyrs and patriots, women and children, the elders and our contemporary leaders. By supporting the passage of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code is an integral part of saying yes to BOL which identifies it as a priority legislative agenda. By voting for the passage of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code, I may be contributing to the promotion of a more democratic and equitable electoral system in the bar and that could lead to a greater political participation, representation and stability in the region. Mister Speaker, as I observe, there is already an astounding landslide yes vote. Indeed, there is really a spirit of one DTA here. My vote is a big yes. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu.
Mastura Isak?
Wassalamualaikum. My vote is yes, Mister Speaker. Uh however, I I remain on my stand and position regarding constitutional issues on the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. As I explained during the committee deliberations, plenary deliberations and the period of amendments, I now look forward to the completion of the task of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority for the conduct of the first elections in twenty twenty five for the Bangsa Moro Parliament by passing the Bill on Parliamentary District Seats in the soonest possible time. Mabuhay tayong lahat.
Matalamja far Apollo Mikail?
Uh Wassalamualaikum. Mister Speaker, can I have my, okay. Mister Speaker, uh my courtesy to our Chief Minister and to our true Speaker. Uh Mister Speaker, I am out of words, Mister Speaker, because tonight is an historic night for the Bangsa Moro, Mister Speaker. I can only say my vote is a jumbo yes.
Mawalil Emil Bahar?
Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Uh my courtesies to the to to the leader of the Bangsa Moro Freedom Movement, our Chief Minister, uh Ahud Balawag Ibrahim, our speaker, Attorney Pakalian Balindong. Uh may I use my one minute, Mister Speaker? Um Mister Speaker, today we fulfill a mandate, an obligation, a duty that we as members of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority swore an oath to fulfill the enactment of an Electoral Code that shall ensure the peaceful and democratic transition of power from us to the next set of leaders of the Bangsa Moro, from that next set of leaders to those that will come after, from one generation to the next so long as our flag waves proudly across the Bangsa Moro skies. It is a mandate clearly stated in the provisions of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law to which our August Assembly owes to existence. Higit pa rito, ita itong mandatong nagsasadiwa ng layunin natin para sa Bangsa Moro. Ang maging isang rehiyon na may matibay na mga institus- na mga institusyon. Isang rehiyon na may lideratong humihiram ng kapangyarihan sa ating mamamayan. Lideratong sasalamin sa kas- sa karanasan, kasaysayan at adhikain ng ating kapwa moro. It is this democratic and autonomous vision that our forefathers bled for. Mister Speaker, and so we gather today to fulfill not only the letter but the very spirit of the BOL. We can all stand proud as a united parliament and I congratulate all of my colleagues under the leadership of our great Speaker and our Chief Minister. Be that as it may, I regret that our code will not completely reflect the progressive vision that I and many others have articulated over the course of our deliberations. As regards Mister Speaker, women representatives of political parties, for example, mas maganda sana kung ipapatupad ang isang zipper approach kung saan nagsasalita ng mga lalaki at babaeng nominee ng mga partido. Miski sa ibang mas developed na bansa, ito ang kinikilaya- kinikilalang ideal. This would have paved the way for true gender equality. Pagkakataon sana ito para kilalani ng buong mundo, ang Bangsa Moro bilangwaran ng patas na demokrasya. Mister Speaker, hindi rin tayo naniniwalang makatarungan ang requirement na magkaroon ng ten thousand kasapi ang isang partido para maiirehisto. I believe this to be unjustly restrictive, counter-democratic and counterproductive to the goal of building strong political parties that are based on values and belief systems rather than personalities. Mister Speaker, I likewise have reservations on having a four percent threshold for political party elections. Despite this, Mister Speaker, I have to say this, I loathe the changes to the provision that now provides for the true will of our people to be reflected through the ballot. Ngayon, maihalal na na rin natin ang mga kinatawan mula sa kababaihan, kabataan at iba pangbatay ang sektor ng lipunan, Mister Speaker. In this way, Mister Speaker, the voices of these sectors will be will be heard. Mister Speaker, we all know how healthy and sometimes heated the debates were, but through the fires of these debates, we forward sa consensus consensus on the way forward to this code. Mister Speaker, we had our challenges. Our capacity was questioned. Question, our intentions unfortunately doubted. Concerns were raised regarding our identity as an institution, as a legislative body, as a parliament that is reflective of our people's resolve. All of this, we should address more thoroughly in the in the days to come. But today, we have shown the world, our country and our people that we are capable of coming together. Na pwede tayong mag-usap kahit pa na magkakaiba ang posisyon at opinion at sa huliya makabuo ng isang matibay at makatarunang makatarungang landas tungo sa ating kinabukasan. Mister Speaker, we have shown democracy at work. Although we may disagree on details, although we may push and pull even drago on some particular steps, we are bound by our love for our people and are proudly marching towards a single horizon of justice, inclusiveness, dignity and progress as one parliament serving as Bangsa Moro. Mister Speaker, allow me also to extend our commendation, my commendation to our floor leader and the Chair of the Committee on Rules on for being a sunshine amid the rain. Uh ma'am, uh we've worked before in the former arm and I know from the time that you took the floor leader role that we can count on you. Thank you for being, for providing a leadership, for being an inclusive partner in the quest for a meaningful electoral exercise in the Bangsa Moro region in Shalawa. My vote is yes, Mister Speaker.
Nindo Sa Proilin?
Ginong Speaker, ang aking boto po ay isang makakababaihang katutubong malakas na pagsangayon ng walang pagalinlangan sa Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. Ang Bangsa Moro Electoral Code, Mister Speaker, ang kaunaunahan sa kasaysayan ng buong bansa at sa Bangsa Moro na unang kumilala at nagbigay ng buhay at nagpatibay sa limut ng alaala ng mga katutubong pamayanan, ang primacy ng aming customary law at customary process kung paano namin pinipili ang aming kinatawan sa parliament. Mister Speaker, hindi magasto 'yung aming proseso ng eleksyon dahil 'yung mga katutubo ay nagkakaroon ng consensus building at tribal assembly. Sinasagot nito ang matagal na ang nating problema sa ating electoral system na kung saan, kung sino 'yung mga popular lang at kung sino 'yung mga pilantropi lamang at sino 'yung may kakayahan lamang ay ang may puwang at poder sa pamamahala. Subalit, ang Bangsa Moro Electoral Code, Mister Speaker, ay inaddress niya ang puwang na ito. Pangalawa, Mister Speaker, ang section twenty-two, letter G ng Bangsa Moro Electoral Code ay ay mas lalong pinagbibay nito ang natatanging papel ng mga non-Moro indigenous women sa pagpalakas ng aming linangan o indigenous political structure at malinaw na representasyon sa parliament. Mister Speaker, napapansin ko lang, tuwing nagpapasatayo ng mahahalagang batas, inaabot tayo ng takipsilim. Katunayan, Mister Speaker, maghahatang ating gabi na. At dahil dito, Mister Speaker, bilang katutubong miyembro ng palamentong ito at malakas na naniniwala sa aming customary protocol, gusto ko lang magbigay ng pagrespeto sa mga nagbuwis ng buhay ang dahilan kung bakit merong pangalang Bangsa Moro. Dahil ang gabing ito ay maari, sila ay saksi din sa mga kaganapan sa tanghalan ito. Gabayanawa, nila tayo, muyad, ang aking boto ay isang malakas na oo.
Midtimbang Mikail?
Thank you, thank you. Sa, bangangitin nyo. Mister Speaker, Deputy Speaker, Majority Floor Leader, Members of the Parliament, to make it short, I vote yes to approve the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. Before we go further, I noticed that we are somewhat forgetting the basic principles as well as the spirit of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. The law that is the reason, reason why we are all here. Let me point out to you the the preamble of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, affirming their distinct historical identity and birthright to the ancestral homeland and their right to chart their political future through a democratic process that will secure their identity, identity and posterity and allow the genuine and meaningful self-governance. Again, I vote yes. Thank you and wasaraf.
Midtimbang Tawakal?
Ahud Billahibnasyetani Radji, bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Our beloved Amiril Mujaidin, Bar Minterim Chief Minister Ahud Balawag Ibrahim, Speaker Pangalian Balindong, Deputy Speaker, Majority Floor Leader, my fellow honorable members of Bangsa Moro Transition Authority, fellow government servants, sa lahat ng ating mga kababayang nakikinig. Ladies and gentlemen, salaamualaikum warahmatullahi taala wa barakatuh.
Mister Speaker, I am here before you to express my utmost support for the proposed electoral code that has been created for our bar. This electoral code is one of the BTS priority legislations and a crucial step towards ensuring fair and transparent election, the foundation of any democratic society. Mister Speaker, we should remember that this government of today is a product of a decade's struggle and negotiations. Many of our brothers and sisters sacrificed their lives for finding and finding a genuine lasting peace in our homeland. So therefore, we should be thankful to them because without that sacrifices of our martyrs, we are not standing here today. As the late Amiril Mujahidin, Syek Salamat Allahhu Ya Ha Mu Said, and I quote, "Our aim is to make the world of Allah supreme," end quote. Mister Speaker, my vote is yes and I dedicate my vote to all martyrs Mujahidin of the Bangsa Moro people. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi taala wa barakatuh.
Miswari Abdul Karim. Miswari Norrida. Mitmo Grasso Junior.
Mister Speaker, um Chief Minister, Speaker Presiding Officer, mga kasama, mga guest po natin, uh salaamualaikum warahmatullahi taala wa barakatuh, magandang gabi po sa ating lahat. Mister Speaker, I will use my one minute for this privilege. Um Mister Speaker, narinig ko po ngayong gabi sa atin lahat, uh this is something for the history. Pero mukhang sa lahat ng naririnig ko, hindi lang po't history, but actually it's her story. So Mister Speaker, karamihan po dito, uh malaki 'yung uh pagkilala dun sa karapatang pang uh kap- uh kababaihan. So Mister Speaker, hindi la- hindi man natin na kuha 'yung zipper system. Uh nakuha naman natin na at least thirty percent. Ibig sabihin pwede pang lumaki. At nakita natin na 'yung ating kababaihan ay maging parte na ng uh leadership position ng political party. Na siyang magiging sentro ng ating baging, bagong political system through the electoral code. At masaya po tayo dito. Mister Speaker, may mga punto po kung saan nahahati 'yung ating boto. Lalong-lalo na dun sa ten thousand uh required membership at ibang provision sa requirement ng political party at dun sa four percent na threshold. Uh normal po't Mister Speaker dahil bawat isa sa atin dinadala natin 'yung mga naririnig natin sa ating mga constituencies sa experts at 'yung mga uh pinabiliin sa atin during sa public consultation. At sa democratic na process, na resolved naman po natin Mister Speaker. Pero bukod dito, gusto ko pong iemphasize Mister Speaker, iilan lang to sa mga contentious provision. So ilan lang po't sa hinatiin natin 'yung ating house ngayong gabi. Karamihan po ng mga provisions na ating nakamit ay nakamit natin ng consensus. At karamihan dito sa mga provision, mas lalo pang gumanda uh during sa floor. Katulad nung uh independent candidate na kuha natin at 'yung mga iba't ibang improvement na on the floor naayos pa po natin. So Mister Speaker, 'yung ating mga provision sa ating Bangsa Moro Lo- uh Electoral Code, uh karamihan po dito ay reform and improvement sa ating political party system, sa ating electoral system Mister Speaker. Uh kwamputo, uh pwede nating sabihin tayo po 'yung magiging pioneer potentially for the Philippine National Electoral and Political Party System. So Mister Speaker, uh ngayong gabi po, uh gusto ko pong pasalamatan 'yung aking classmate, ang ating floor leader uh na siyang pwede nating masabi uh sa gabing ito, mother of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. At dahil po dyan Mister Speaker, uh hindi po tayo pwedeng bumoto ng hindi, yes.
Munyo Sasain.
Azubillah imne shaitani radjim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Subhanakallail Malana illa ma'alam tanina kental alim hakim rabad. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Our honorable Chief Minister, Ajib Ma'ud Ibrahim, our speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, the deputy speakers, to the respective members of the parliament. Yung congratulation at commendation natin sa ating indefatigable chairman of Committee on Rules, Attorney Dumama, at sa kasama niya, at sa lahat ng mga abugado na nagkaterbaho. Ang achievement po ng Committee on Rules is an achievement of the parliament. Achievement of parliament is a achievement of the government. It has more determined so that we show to the world that we are capable in charting our own destiny and the charting of our own government. The Bangsa Moro people are united and can aspire for a competent government. My vote is yes. Thank you very much.
Uranun Swae. Pakasim Ubaida. Pak Abdul Wahab. Pangendaman Nabila Margarita. Parkasio Randor.
Mister Speaker, my exercise, the privilege, one minute statement. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahirobbilalamin. Wassalamu wassalamu alla rasulillah wa ala alihi wasahbi ajma'in amabat. Our uh respected Chief Minister, Mr. A'ud Balawak Ibrahim, our Speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, and of course, our uh floor leader, Attorney Siya Elia Dumama Alba. My colleagues in the Committee on Rules, my uh brothers and sisters in this parliament, uh salaamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Alhamdulillah. Tonight, I thank Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala for granting us this privilege to chart the political law that will govern and determine the manner how we will exercise our right to sovereignty. Today, we have achieved another success in victory as we did our utmost to craft an electoral code which is a significant development in fulfilling our right to self-determination. I also would like to express our profound thanks and gratitude to those who have offered their lives or have perished in the struggle to assert our right to self-determination. Indeed, this historic event tonight will serve as monument to show to our people that in the process of crafting this law, we adhere to the principle enshrined in the Quran that in the conduct of the affairs of the people, there must be consultation. Wa amrohum sura bainon. There are many reasons for supporting this law. But most of all, we say that we support this law or this electoral code because they would like to be in solidarity to all our brothers and sisters who have firmly believed that we shall not rest until the full realization of our inalienable right to self-determination. Mabuti at magandang yes na yes po sa inyong lahat.
Yang Ramon Senior.
Our esteemed Chief Minister, Mister Speaker, and esteemed members of this parliament. Magandang gabi po sa inyong lahat, Piok Lungonon. I have been a witness to the exhaustive consultations conducted by the Committee on Rules under our Chairman Attorney Line, our Majority Floor Leader. Consultations among all constituents of the Bangsa Moro to include all sectors and among them our non-moro indigenous brothers and sisters. This is a clear manifestation Mister Speaker that indeed the Bangsa Moro shows a participative, transparent, and inclusive governance through to their advocacy of good and moral governance. As a new fight in this parliament, I am indeed very happy to be part of this milestone in the approval of this inclusive electoral code of the Bangsa Moro. For this, I vote yes.
Ramos Diamila. Salinda Said. Salik Ali. Sangki Ali. Sima Umar Yasir. Sima Romeo.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. My high respect to the Chief Minister. Salaamualaikum warahmatullahi taala wa barakatuh. In pursuant of our mandate under the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, I am voting for yes to the passage of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. Through the commitment and leadership of the chairpersons of the Committee on Rules, Attorney Siya Elia Dumama Alba, this code went through a rigorous process of legal and political scrutiny from my fellow members in the Committee on Rules. In the past few weeks, series of meetings were conducted by the committee and I attest to the fact that this code has not only been discussed but thoroughly and carefully examined. It first presented their views, opinions, and suggestions in order to carefully police each provisions in the, in the code. The provisions that have legal and practical implications were addressed and their consequences were also assessed. Hence, I only have nothing but trust that this code will provide a smooth and peaceful election in the years to come, insyaallah. Through this electoral code, its group in our Bangsa Moro is represented and given the right to be part of this Bangsa Moro government. Thank you. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi taala wa barakatuh.
Syek Said.
Uh Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. I remember the battle cry of the Mujahidin who are martyr in their struggle and I will repeat, Allahu Akbar, Allahu Akbar, Allahu Akbar. The enactment of this Bangsa Moro electoral code is one of the fruit of the sacrifices of our Mujahidi who struggled for almost fifty years. And still we are now in the process of highly bid negotiation with involvement of the international community. Parapo ay tatlong magkakapatid dito. The intervention of international community, nandito na sila ngayon. And the national government, and the Bangsa Moro people. Parang magkakapatid na bunso ang Bangsa Moro. Pero nakikita na li- natin na still malnourish. Kaya kailangan natin 'yung mga vitamin na pagtulong-tulungan natin dito sa guberno, sa guberno natin. Uh we are still in the negotiation na kailangan natin itong mga legal mind. Nakikita natin po na sila talaga 'yung naghihirap. Kailangan natin 'yung mga teknokrats. Kailangan natin 'yung isang direksyon na kailangan natin 'yung mga leader na mayron silang isang direksyon. So, di ko napatatagalin. So alhamdulillah, I vote for yes. Salaamualaikum.
Silongan Aida.
A'udzubillah imne shaitani radjim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. My courtesy to our beloved Chief Minister and to the Speaker of the Parliament at sa lahat ng uh magagandang lalaki at mga babae na member ng parliament. Unang-una ito ay pagpatupad sa mandato natin bilang mga member ng parliamento na nakalagay sa Bangsa Moro Organic Law. Pangalawa ito ay pagtupad sa pangako ng ating mahal na Chief Minister sa ating mahal na Pangulo nung kumunta dito sa atin na ipapasa natin ito within the first quarter. Alhamdulillah natupad natin at hindi natin napasubo ang ating mahal na Chief Minister. Ang pagpatupad natin in its true spirit, kung may patupad natin itong Bangsa Moro Electoral Code, ay posibling maging modelo tayo ng ibang rehiyon sa buong bansa. Lalo pa't ngayon pinag-uusapan na sa kongreso at sinaduang pag-amyenda sa konstitusyon. Ang buong mundo ay nagbabantay kung paano natin ipatupad ang pinagkalooob sa atin na autonomiya at ang pag-implement ng genuine and principled political party. Ang huli ay ang aking pagbati sa aking mga magagaling na mga kasamahan, na mga abugado na pinamunoan ni Attorney Siya Elia Dumama at ang kanyang mga deputy at mga kasama nila na naggumalugad sa komilek para lang masiguro na ang ating maipasa na batas ay wala nang sasalungat nito, insyaallah. Ang aking pagboto sa uh batas na to ay isang malaking malaking oo. Maraming salamat.
Sinulindi, sinulinding Kadel. Sulaiman Ali. Tago Ay Salini.
The gentleman from Lando Del Sur is recognized.
The gentleman from Lando Gelsu is recognized. Madaming salamat Speaker. Tukod sana magsalita lang ng tinsikas. Kung pwede saan nakapi paste na lang 'yung sinabi ng mga kasama ko para tinsikas na lang. But anyway, uh Speaker, uh isang magandang malapit na magating gabi sa ating lahat. Wassalamualaikum warakmatulaytala wabaraka'tu. My due courtesy and respect to our Chief Minister, Ahud Balawag Ibrahim, to our legitimate speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindung, to our presiding officer and of course to my colleagues in the to my colleagues in the members of the Parliament and to our guests and our staffs who sacrifice their time in staying and witnessing history in our Parliament. Of course, Mister Speaker, my commendation to the officers and members of the Committee on Rules aided by our floor leader, Attorney Laia Dumama Alba at ang kanyang kasama, I call them the four Lady Musketeers. Ang kanyang kasama si Minister Musketeers. The four Lady Musketeers, MP Raiza Jajuri, MP Ana Tarata Basman, MP Marian Arnaldo, of course ang kanilang leaders si MP and floor leader Dumama for spearheading the Committee on Rules. At sila po talaga ang nakasacrifice ng pagpasa ng batas nito. I commend, I commend them a lot, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, I am voting today for yes. Not I am voting for a simple law that we are approving. I am voting yes because I am voting for history. This is the first time, Mister Speaker, since the creation of the autonomous region in our country that the autonomous radio area will be crafting an electoral code for the Muslims in our country. Sa kahon-oon ng pagkakataon, tayo po ay gumawa ng batas ng electoral code na naayon sa ating kultura at reliyon. This is a major, major transformation from arm to barm. Kasi itong electoral code ay wala sa sixty seven thirty four, wala sa ninety fifty four, dito lang nakasad sa eleven fifty four. Ang local government code, education code, civil service code, and other codes, administrative code ay nakasad sa ninety forty four. Ito ay isang malaking pagbabago sa paggawa ng batas dito sa autonomous region in Muslim Mindanaw. That's why, Mister Speaker, I sacrificed and I waited and I attended actively in our meetings because I want to become a part of history in this Parliament, Mister Speaker. So, Mister Speaker, ang paggawa natin ng batas nito ay isang malaking step, is a big step in our quest for self-determination because slowly our quest for self-determination will be slowly realized by the enactment of this code. Wa billai taufik walidaya. Wassalamualaikum warakmatulaytala wabaraka'tu. I vote a jurassic yes, Mister Speaker.
Stan Nabil. Jurassic means old ha? Jurassic means old.
May I be given the privilege to?
Yeah, you have one minute.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, Mister Speaker. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. My courtesy to our Chief Minister, Ahud Balawag Ibrahim, our beloved Speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, Speaker of the Parliament, our senior minister who initially started this in the cabinet, the cabinet bill, which he shepherded with his colleagues in the cabinet. The members of the Commission Rules spearheaded by its energetic and uh intelligent floor leader, Attorney Laia Alba Dumama, Dumama Alba, the vice chairman, Attorney Minister, MP Attorney Raiza Jajuri, Attorney Ana Basman, Attorney Marian Arnaldo, the members of this BTA. I will join the chorus of commendation uh in congratulating uh our floor leader for a job well done. Congratulations. I have, many of us have expressed our own sentiments, disagreements, and maybe some discord in terms of appreciating the provisions, different provisions of this electoral code. But we were minded by the fact that we are to pass this in, in specific uh time, timeline as a commitment, as a mandate in the organic law being one of the priority codes and the instruction of the president appealing to us to pass this code. Our Chief Minister has committed and through to his word with our support to his leadership, we have now the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. I have expressed some disagreements on some of the provisions. But without discord, I don't think, and some dissonance, we will not appreciate the unity that we have achieved in crafting the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. We have given our, we were given our spaces and we were given our time to, to express whatever is on our minds. But we cannot control the majority. The majority has their own reason for insisting on some of the provision. But nonetheless, I am most contented because we have heard that that we have considered all the parameters for this to become an effective law because it is constitutional, it is in accordance with national laws, in accordance with the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. We have listened to the articulation of the several sectors. We have given importance to the culture and tradition of the Bangsa Moro and its non-moro IPs. We have listened to the advocacies of women and the youth. We have consulted the komelek, the LGUs, the NGOs, and the CSOs. Nothing more remains but to consolidate all this and express it in one instrument, this legislation, a milestone in our lives and I am happy to be part of this. Thank you very much. I vote yes.
Posiman Aspar.
Mister Speaker, may I exercise mine? Thank you. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. When the floor leader required us as to which committee that we wish to join, I deliberately intended to join the Committee on Rules for this code. For this, Madam Floor Leader, Attorney Laia Dumama Alba, my sincere appreciation for including me as member of the Committee on Rules. I would like to commend my fellow members of this committee and generally the members of the Parliament for reaching this far tonight. And of course, commendation to the floor leader for steering the committee to where we, to where we are now this evening. It is such an honor and privilege for me as part of this historic August Buddy. I am accepting the challenge to represent the most marginalized sector as I am from the Basulta region. Yes, I have some frustrations on some of my expectations were not met in this code. However, since this is just a man-made law and a progressive at that, hence not a perfect law, yet for the love of Bangsa Moro, to borrow the uh quotes from my U2 Amir, MP Amir, for the love of Bangsa Moro, I must submit to the wisdom and compromises made through in the process of enacting this law. Therefore, without reservation, Mister Speaker, I am voting for a sounding yes for this Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Otto Basir.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. My courtesy and respect, Chief Minister, sa ating speaker, Deputy Speaker, ang ating mga kasamahan sa Parlamento. Uh unang-una ang boto ko ay yes dahil uh sa kabila no'ng uh ilang buwan lamang na sumikap ang Parlamento para maipasa itong electoral code ay sa awa ni Anna Subhana Wat'ala. Ay isang karangalan po sa akin na bagong membro ng Parlamento na naging kasama at kasapi sa pagbasa ng electoral code sa barm region. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Uh ito ay nararapat at tadhana na ito talaga sa kabila no'ng uh pagsumikap no'ng mga kasama natin sa committee, sa panguna na aming uh butihing floor leader, Attorney Alba. Uh sa isang pagbugay at uh pagsaludo sa iyong napakagandang proseso at napakagandang dinaanan sa ating mga kasamaan. Bilang committee member ng Rules, ay taos puso po ako nagpapasalamat ki'ala Subhana Wat'ala at sumusuporta sa lahat ng mabuting hangarin ng Bangsa Moro government. My vote is yes. Mabuhay ang mga kababayan, mabuhay ang mga kalalakian, mabuhay tayong lahat. Wa billai taufik walidaya. Wassalamualaikum warakmatulaytala wabarakatuh.
Oy oyod, si Tiffany. Jacob Muhammad. The Secretary General, can you now read the results of the vote?
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahihabbinasta'in. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mister Speaker, we have now the result of the nominal voting of the BTA Parliament Bill Number Twenty Nine entitled, An Act Providing for the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanaw. With sixty-four yes votes, zero no votes, and zero abstention. Mister Speaker, the yes votes have
with sixty-four yes votes, zero no votes, and zero abstention, BTA Bill Number Twenty Nine, an act providing for the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code, the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanaw is approved on ten, on third and final reading. Allahu Akbar, Allahu Akbar, Allahu Akbar.
Mister Speaker, I move to adjourn the session until the regular session, which is on March thirteen.
Session is adjourned until March thirteen, twenty twenty-three. We will now proceed with the ceremonial signing and the Speaker of the Parliament to come upstage to uh to perform the ceremonial signing of BTA Bill Number, Bangsa Moro Autonomy Act Number Thirty Five. Yawan, yawan oraninyan? 'Yung draft, sa na 'yung draft? Draft. Sa na 'yung draft nila? Yawan oraninyan, yawan oraninyan, kadi may lai mga pamirman. Tida sa na? One, uh so ina, ina, ina. Before the, the drafts are written, are signed, we will hear a simple message from the Chief Minister. Uh okay. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim.
To build a government worthy of the name Bangsa Moro and along with such commitment is the promise to enact an electoral code that would help pave the way for a more peaceful and democratic elections in the region. Participated by genuinely principled political parties indeed today's enactment of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code is a significant step towards realizing such a promise. I am optimistic that with a series of consultations with stakeholders and experts and with the thorough deliberations from the committee to the plenary sessions, we have a Bangsa Moro Electoral Code that we can we have a Bangsamoro Electoral Code that we can call and be proud of, Insha Allah. I would also like to take this opportunity to show my utmost respect and appreciation to all who have contributed to the passage of the Bangsamoro Electoral Code from the technical, legal and secretariat support staff to the cabinet and to my colleagues in the parliament. May your hard work be rewarded by the Almighty Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, Insha Allah. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the fourth priority code that we have enacted. Let us build on this positive momentum to finish the remaining priority codes and other important legislations as soon as possible. Remember that we still have the local governance code and the revenue code as our, among our priority codes and also the indigenous peoples code. Let us continue to serve the Bangsamoro with pure hearts and sincere intentions. Before I end my, ah I just want to share a bit of information maybe everybody will appreciate. First is that we were able to have a breakfast meeting with the Prime Minister of Malaysia last March 1 in Manila after his meeting with the president. His brief information and is that they have a separate talk with the president about the Bangsamoro and the Bangsamoro and the president committed, expresses commitment to continue the implementation of the peace agreement. The Prime Minister also expressed the commitment of his government and the people of Malaysia in continuing their support to the Bangsamoro people and the peace process. We are also happy that we were able to attend the first summit, Sariya Summit in Kagayan di Oro, national summit of, first national summit of Sariya in Kagayan di Oro, ah Kagayan di Oro City last March 5 and 6. We were very, ah it was a very fruitful summit and it sent a message that Sariya will not only be implemented, will not, the Sariya Court will not only be implemented in the Bangsamoro but in the entire country there will be Sariya Courts. So we are, I have also a chance of whispering to ah this, the primary ah of the Sariya, of the Supreme Court, the Chief Justice regarding the case against the BOL. His simple response, I just ask him what is now the situation of the case filed against the BOL? His simple answer is we are taking care of that, so don't worry Chief Minister. So that is fine, ah just a simple information for you. Alam kong pagunta kayo, now we are on the 12 o'clock already. So hanggang dito na lang, wa bilai Taufik Walhidaya. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Kung gugulis yun sa ating lahat.
Subtitles by the Amara.org community